...councilmember Baker.
Present.
Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Present.
Councilmember Willis.
Present.
Councilmember McGum.
Present.
Councilmember Rouse.
Present.
Mayor Bill Edward.
Hey, hey.
City, um, city manager, Mr. Donald. City attorney, Ms. Walker, you have a call.
Thank you. This has been with.
Indication will be done by Dwayne Warren, your intern chaplain.
Okay, okay, I got you on, thank you. All right, good evening.
First, I would like to introduce myself to those of you who may not have met me. My name is Chaplain Dwayne Warren and I am serving as intern and assistant chaplain to Pastor Henry in the office of the chaplain of the city of South Fulton. And I would like to say what an honor it is to be here amongst all of you leaders, your honor, all the council representatives and the city manager and all of you. The scripture tells us that there is an abundance of leaders and with that comes safety and wisdom. And with that being said, let us pray. Gracious eternal heavenly Father, Lord, we just come today thanking you. Lord, we just thank you for another day, Lord. Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity to praise your holy name. And Lord, we thank you for the city of South Fulton, Georgia. And Lord, we thank you for the leaders that you have bestowed with such a daunting task of managing this great city of Georgia. And Lord, the word says, if we ask not, we have not. And Lord, we just ask for your Holy Spirit, Lord. Let your Holy Spirit pour down on these leaders tonight, Lord. Let their wisdom be known through your Holy Spirit, Lord. Let the Holy Spirit touch their ears and their mouths and their hearts so that all that might be received can be constructive for our great city. And Lord, we just thank you in advance for all that you're going to do and all that in that our in agreement may say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated and God bless you. Madam clerk?
Our first agenda item is presentation of announcement, presentation of by councilmember Gum to Comcast proclamation.
I need a microphone. Microphone? Microphone? We've been, we've been here since two o'clock, so. Alright. Good evening, everyone. I am excited today because I have one of our greatest partners in the city of South Fulton Comcast and they have really been great to me for over the past two years. I've had the opportunity to work with Lizette on our Comcast Cares Day, which as you all know, we this year did a contest where we decided who was going to be the winner of designing our mascot for, what is it, greener cleaner South Fulton. So that was fun, but this year it just actually we pushed it to the next level and we have some special presentations that we want to do. But I'm gonna first turn it over to Mr. Matthew.
They will come.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I will turn this over to Mr. Martin and he will tell you a little bit about Comcast and the wonderful things we have going on in the city of South Fulton.
Thank you very much, thank you so much to this just distinguished diocese of individuals in our city. I'm a South Fulton resident, proud, looking, standing right across from the person that gave me my first job, your mayor, Bill Edward, this year. I think I later got fired from it when I worked at that. So if any of you want to talk to me about how to make your way after you failed a little bit, I'd be glad to share the story of how I got fired. Where's Dolores? She was the hatchet lady. But I am certainly glad to be home in my home district and I am so grateful and thankful for the partnership that we have with Comcast and the city of South Fulton. We do a lot of great things in this state. We do more than just provide internet services and computer services and cable TV. We do a whole lot more than that. Most importantly, we serve every community that we work in. And so what I wanted to do was talk a little bit about the things that were done this year. We're so, so, so excited. I have Lizette Tarver standing next to me. She is also a city of South Fulton resident and we'll hear from her in a moment. She led and became a Comcast ambassador. I mean, she is just beyond doing her job daily. She is just committed completely and totally to Comcast, our corporate responsibility programs that we work under. And I have Stu across from me, he's a salesperson, so we have, we know we have the best service in the business, but we are glad and proud of what we do in the city of South Fulton. We also are proud to, and I don't think you even know this, that we have a Leaders in the Chief of Scholarship. Julian Woods, who is a District Two resident, got $2,500 from Comcast. Now he is at North Carolina Central, no, I'm sorry, North Carolina A&amp;T University in his freshman year. That's right, that's right. So I think, I know he's not here, we clap it up for higher education. Comcast supports students in all that he does. We're just really, really extremely proud of that partnership. At this time, I'll let you hear a little bit from Lizette. She's gonna talk to you a little bit about a special program that's near and dear to our hearts. The digital divide is real and we have children and young people and seniors all over the world and all over the country and right here at home that do not have access to the internet. And one of our programs, Internet Essentials, allows low-income households to receive internet service for $9.95 a month. And we are proud of that program, not $995 a month. Mayor, Mayor Edward. $9.95 a month. So it's just gonna talk to you a little bit about that program, maybe that's a presentation for special young people with us on the night.
Thank you, Wayne. I think Wayne said it best, that giving back in our local communities, in particular for me here in South Fulton in District Two, is truly part of Comcast DNA. And I can honestly say it is truly one of the best parts of my job. As Wayne mentioned, Comcast along with Congress Lita Gums, and councilwoman Gums, excuse me, held our Comcast Cares Day project this past May here in South District Two with our home base over at our library nearby. We had almost 200 volunteers that came out to participate in our overall street cleanup beautification project. This was in close coordination with many of our elementary schools, so Cliftondale, Stonewall Town, as well as Westlake volunteers came out. And it was folks of all ages, which makes me always remind everyone that giving back doesn't take a lot of money. It takes a little bit of time and I believe that we can teach our young people that they too can participate in ensuring that we're giving back to our community. So it was wonderful to be able to join in with all of you guys in those efforts. More recently, we also held our internet safety training seminar as well as a surprise laptop giveaway for seniors and students here in our QLS senior center in South Fulton County. This internet safety training seminar, it happened as part of our Comcast Internet Essentials program. Comcast Cares Day is a huge annual initiative that is a global event across Comcast, which is near and dear to our hearts, but our Internet Essentials program absolutely assists us in making sure that the digital divide is closed. I think we should all know if we don't, that it does still exist and we are more than happy at Comcast to be able to pay it forward and bring that connection and close the gap. Our Internet Essentials program is one of our largest as well as comprehensive broadband adoption programs in the nation, offering low cost, high speed, as well as the ability to purchase subsidized computers, which is really great. We also offer a free digital literacy training for participants through our network of community partners. While the internet and social space is fantastic, we want to make sure that our youth as well as our seniors are educated about internet safety. That is truly important. To bring this full circle, one of the most exciting things that happened more recently is that I was named as a community champion and as part of that naming, I was gifted five laptops to be able to give back to students as well as to one senior. This was really great and councilwoman Gums along with others worked to identify these wonderful recipients. I would like to say congratulations to London Miller, who is a first grade student at Cliftondale Elementary. Congratulations. We have our third grade student, Ausmeen Sisay, who is also a Cliftondale Elementary student. From Stonewall Town Elementary, we have Joshua Anderson, who's a fourth grade student. And also from Stonewall Elementary, we have Marineke Shawye, who is a third grade student. And I apologize if I butchered any of his names. Congratulations. And from the city of South Fulton, we do have our senior, Ms. Rosetta Hemmings, who is also going to be a recipient of the laptops. Because Hemmings is not here, so we'll put this on her behalf. Alright, I'm gonna turn it back over to Wayne. Thank you guys so much and keep up all of our work, students. Yes, please.
We really appreciate the partnership, the dollars, super important.
They want the principal, the principal to come up for both of y'all here.
Parents, parents.
Now I'm letting everybody else go first.
Everybody else go first off three. One, two, three. One more.
I need y'all to say Comcast. Alright, on three, everybody say Comcast.
One, two, three.
Comcast. Alright, one more time.
Okay, hold on. Maybe back up just a little bit. Thank you. One, two, three. One, two, three. Hold on. One, two, three. Stay there. Gotcha.
Congratulations.
Talk a little about Comcast today, that really thing I always love. But we really think that this is the sort of really important part. I don't know what the CLF is, but if you start bringing this money, I think it's gonna get everybody excited, right? As I said earlier, Comcast Cares Day is our largest, really the largest in the country of all companies, corporate responsibility, corporate giving at any company in the country. And this year, as councilwoman Gums said earlier, she had a return of volunteers to come out, almost 200 volunteers to come out and support the event. And because of that, she has been, her, her this year will be granted a check from Comcast for $3,302.30 to continue doing the great work that she's been doing.
You need 6,000?
Willis also had a major project this year. We're gonna be doing her presentation a little bit later. And I'll start into councilwoman Jackson. Everybody wants a partner now and we're glad about it. And we love seeing South Fulton, we'll be back soon to share the love. Thank you all very, very much.
Well, you know, I'm always, we try to be diverse, so you know, it's great. So thank you and I want you all to know that this will be going to District Two schools, so Cliftondale, Stonewall Town Elementary and Westlake, they really came out with support and so they will be getting this and then we can do whatever they want to do.
Two, three. Thank you.
Alright, and just, I know, just to solidify our relationship just a little bit more and for you to continue to partner with the city of South Fulton now that you have all of our council members that are on board, I would love to present this proclamation to you all. Hopefully this will be a sign of continued success for years to come. So I'll read the proclamation. It's a lot, but I won't, I'll try to speak through it. So Comcast NBC Universal has made it a priority to give back to the community through its products and services and Comcast Cares Day and Internet Essentials are two of its signature initiatives. And whereas now is the 18th year, Comcast Cares Day has become one of the largest corporate commitments to volunteerism and service in America. And to date, the initiative has galvanized more than 1 million volunteers to help strengthen communities around the world. Our company-wide celebration of Comcast Cares Day happened on Saturday, May 4, 2019, and included two Comcast Cares Days events hosted by the city of South Fulton, a community cleanup with District Two, councilmember Congress Lita Gums, and a community-wide cleanup with District Three, councilmember Ellen Willis. And whereas, in an effort to close the digital legacy gap, excuse me, literacy gap, Comcast Internet Essentials initiative has provided low-cost, high-speed internet service to more than 8 million low-income residents around the country. And on May 17, 2019, the company donated laptops and one year of free internet service to more than 250 seniors in the Poly Living Services Program, living in the city of South Fulton and the city of Atlanta. And whereas Comcast expanded the eligibility pool for the Internet Essentials program to include more households, which is projected to increase the company's investment to nearly 1 billion and over 10 million additional households connected across America. And whereas Comcast NBC Universal's commitment to its corporate responsibility value of giving back to the community is evidenced through its long history of supporting local communities and organizations, developing programs and partnerships, and mobilizing resources to connect people and inspire positive and substantive, excuse me, substantive, change in both Comcast Cares Days and Internet Essentials impact on the city of South Fulton reaffirms their commitment. Now therefore be resolved, the mayor and council of the city of South Fulton recognizes Comcast NBC Universal for its commitment to strengthening the city through its community initiatives and does hereby proclaim Tuesday, September the 10th, 2019, as Comcast NBC Universal Day in the city of South Fulton. Congratulations. I want to thank you all for coming out to Hickory Park as well. That wasn't mentioned in the proclamation, but you all did come out to Hickory Park and you came into Hickory Park and offered the $9.99 a month internet services and interacting with our school supplies. So thank you for supporting District Three in Hickory Park as well. Alright, that is it. Did anyone else want to say anything? Alright, well, we got a long evening. Thank you so much for coming and we appreciate you so much. Alright, thanks. I'm sorry, I called it in y'all. Come on, Wayne, give us a picture.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next, the next item is, the next item is approving council agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes.
Are there all changes?
I want to pull something.
Okay, I can go here.
I said I want to pull something.
Which item?
I want to pull the, um, the citywide TSC.
Pull it or pull later or?
You want to add to the regular TSC or you want to hold? I'm gonna want to hold.
Okay. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Are there any changes to the agenda? I hear another matter.
Okay, then you need, we need a motion to adopt the council agenda with pulling item number 14 from the agenda.
I'm making a motion that I do approve, um, the agenda, pulling item number 14 from the agenda. Do I hear this?
Councilmember, can we also pull the administration if that's okay? Because it has a chart that is an organizational structure and it's in fluctuation right now. So I would hate to adopt that before you adopt the final chart of the budget. Maybe if we could put it after the budget adoption, that meeting night, and then if you can adopt it consistently.
Are you talking about a different night or the night?
Well, if we can continue it at least until after you approve the budget and then I can make that chart consistent with how you approve the budget, the organizational structure.
It's already a J, I have it on the agenda, right?
Correct.
And you want to make it further on in the agenda?
Well, no, the meeting was put into the September 18 meeting.
Okay, that's alright, I got you. She said that's fine, so we can pull that one from the agenda as well.
And there's actually one more, councilwoman Gums, the plastic recyclables ordinance. We can continue that. We have a discussion with a local jurisdiction, well, not a local jurisdiction, but a jurisdiction that does similar regulation. If we could hear them out before we actually make any adoption, that would be the preference.
I would like to go ahead and make a motion to hold that until our.
Well, there is a motion, so I'm asking if it's okay.
Can you add that, please?
She said yes, okay, we add that to, to pull this. Okay, for clarity.
So we're pulling item number 14, number 19, going to the August, I mean, September 18 meeting and pulling item number 30 from the agenda.
So September 18, September 18 is a budget, is a budget-only public hearing. I think what everybody's saying, they want it on the next council or council meeting, which will be September 24.
Okay. So councilwoman, give your place, the motion is no second.
Second.
Proportional to second, in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, that passes.
Next item on the agenda is approval of August 13 city council meeting, minutes?
I'm going to approve August 13 city council meeting, minutes, second.
Proprietary rule to second, in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, that passes.
Next is approval of special call meeting, August 20.
I'm going to approve the August 20th, 29th, any minutes for special call meeting?
Proprietary rule to second, in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, that, that passes.
Next item is minutes from August 23, special call meeting.
I'm going to approve special call meeting, August 23.
Proprietary rule to second, in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, that passes.
The next item on the agenda is public hearings. Item number five, request for council approval of M18-006 for modification of Z00-0102 at Rock Creek, formerly known as BudgN, Oates Phase Two.
Please, mayor and council, the item before you, the item that you've heard before regarding a modification to a number of case items that were heard of Fulton County, you're not gonna give pretty much a full, long presentation that you've heard this before. The packet does include a number of recommendations that staff still recommends for you to hear tonight. I'm pleased to bring you questions you may have.
This is for Brad Gray. So at this time, I know that there are still some outstanding conversations that need to be had, so this item, we are in agreement to move this to the, uh, 20, September 24.
Is this one of your advances?
Yes, yes. So there is still some outstanding, so we're deferring it to September the 24 of council meeting.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
So I was at a community meeting on yesterday and several of residents in District Three informed me that although this project is sitting in District Two, it's impacting residents who live in District Three. When you go down button road, people don't just drive on the District Two side, right across the street is District Three. And they felt like they had not been invited or consulted to any community meetings. And me as the councilperson, I had not been approached either about any community meetings. So my ask is whoever is responsible for organizing a community meeting, that they reach out not only to the District Two side, but it also includes the District Three side. Because that street, one side is District Two, when you cross the street is District Three. And we already have a lot of traffic congestion, we have a lot of density in that area during the afternoon and even in the morning time. And so I think it would behoove to hear feedback from the community from both districts. And whoever is responsible for communicating to the council people about this meeting, I would like to have a meeting with them as well. Again, this project sits in District Two, but people just don't drive on one side of the. Again, this project sits in District Two, but people just don't drive on one side of the street. When you walk across the street, it's District Three.
So if I may ask that, um, the ordinance identifies who we communicate with, so if you would like to have that changed in the ordinance you made, it's two hundred and fifty feet from the property, we communicate within that, and I just confirm that the project did meet those requirements.
Again, residents who live in that vicinity told me yesterday that they do live within that radius and they were not contacted. I was told there was only one meeting held in January, and they were not invited. I'm the council person, and I feel like the planning department should, they, they know how to read maps. So, they should also be able to understand that a project is not only going to impact one district based on what a project is. So, I should have been consulted as well, and I wasn't. And I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just asking, since this is going to be deferred to the September twenty-fourth agenda between now and the twenty-fourth, I would like to be contacted, and I also would like for you, I consider, to have a community meeting to include those residents on the District Three side as well.
Mr. Donald, did you get that?
I can't get it.
Heard you, um, council member, I did.
Any further discussion?
No, um, I, I do, I just, just to, um, I guess, you know, speak in regards to that. I understand Councilwoman Willis' concerns. Um, I do ask that those individuals that are going through this process, I do know that they did have a community meeting, they attempted to have another one. Um, and they have met with, and the residents that are being directly impacted in that two hundred and fifty mile radius. So again, I did, uh, at our last meeting suggest that we do have another community meeting, I don't mind that. But also at the same time, they have done their due diligence in speaking to everyone. And that's, that's all I'm saying, there's no need to attack, but also at the same time, those community members as well know where they can find the council person as well. So if there were concerns, then they should have reached out instead of doing that.
Any further questions, if you have all been considered?
I can't, yeah, she can't.
Um, trying to find, where do you, what, did you follow, I think I heard you say that you did follow the proper procedure?
Yes, ma'am, the code identifies that two hundred and fifty feet within the radius of that project, that property, we notify, haven't notified. They confirmed they did notify all of those residents within the two hundred and fifty feet. We give them the addresses based on the GIS system, and they confirm they didn't communicate with those individuals.
Okay, is there a way that you can, like, and I know it's not, like, you would be diligent, just make sure.
It's in the packet.
No, I, I'm, and I'm fine, I'm just asking a question. We're good. As long as you did your due diligence.
We did, we did, we did as well as we, you know, we...
Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, let's vote, I mean, let's, let's vote.
We're deferring it to the twenty-fourth of September, two thousand and nineteen.
The next, the next item is approval of M nineteen dash oh oh one modification of two thousand and six D dash zero zero four two South Fulton, the Bluffs at Camp Creek.
Okay, this is an item that you've heard before as well, um, we have not kind of skipped past a lot of these because you again heard these. Um, we have met a number of times with the actual developer slash builder of this project. Um, we've had a number of meetings that they are comfortable with, with the conditions. Uh, staff as well has met with them and we're comfortable with the conditions before you, so staff is recommending approval of this item.
There were two items, uh, council, uh, three.
They're all three, all three together.
Careful here, all three together.
Sure, so the same thing I would say for the next, uh, we have met with the developer for the same, same developers, same builders. Uh, we've met with them a number of times since the last time we've met with you. We've all collectively come together with, uh, conditions that we believe will move this project forward productively, and we're recommending approval as well for this project, so both items are recommended approval from staff.
It's the, uh...
Yes.
It's the, uh...
After Camp Creek, yes.
After your presence, go to open the public hearing. Okay, those who are for and those who are against, are over here, against, over here. Are you the advocate, sir?
Yes, sir. Good evening, my name is Bill Goodwin, two three five Corporate Center Drive, Stockbridge, Georgia. I'm a project manager for High Mass Properties, and we've been working with the city of South Fulton for a year and a half or so, trying to get this project back up off the ground. And we are comfortable with the conditions that staff have recommended, and might move vote.
Any other, if I don't speak for the project, anyone can speak against the project?
Good evening, my name is Bruce Moody, and I reside forty-six twenty Jones Road. I am asking you to vote against this, and I would just like to explain why. First of all, there was very little community involvement in either one of these developments. I heard a lot about meetings, I'm not sure who they met with, but it was not the community. In the past, we've always had items that came through where the developers had to contact a nearby community and the umbrella unit that was organized there. And in this, in this instance, it happened eighty-one times. The other problem I have with this is you have a planning committee. They don't go through the planning committee, they come directly to you, which means that tonight is the first time you're hearing about this. So you know as much about this as most of the people sitting out there. That's not fair because it's an extremely important issue. Every issue that gets voted on here becomes a precedent, and that precedent stands for the entire city, not just for this zone, not just for this community, for inte, the entire city of South Fulton. It's time that you move back to what, the way it used to be, where the planning committee was also involved. Because that means that the developers have to go through two hurdles, through items, two different groups of people. They're not working with us, they're working between the two of us, between the developers and the community. What they think makes a lot of sense, and it should be given back to you, their thoughts and their ideas, that is not happening. The other thing is, what does the planning committee do? What are they planning? If they're not here and they're not seeing the developers, how can they plan? Now, just before I came up here, you honored a lot of schools and a lot of school children. Has anybody given any thought to where you're going to build your next school? I know you don't build it, the Board of Education builds it. But the last school that was built in this area was Langston Hughes, seventy-two thousand acres. I don't know if we have seventy-two left yet, and if it is, it may not be suitable for a school. The last elementary school that was built on Derek is two stories. That has not happened before, not in the south side, on the north side they did that. Because we don't have the land, because we're so busy building houses and putting people there, that when those kids grow up and they're ready to go to school, you don't have any place to put them, and that's already happened before. So we need to plan this whole thing out, we can't just sit back and say, we're going to give this to them and that to them, without knowing where we're going in the future, and the future will be here very fast. So we need to think this thing through, you need to hear from the community, you need to set a system of where the community is always involved, and at the very least knowledgeable about the fact that they're going to have meetings, that has not happened. You have an instance on this where you had the turnaround for a bus going into the development, they couldn't turn around, so it has to meet in front, meet the children in front of the development rather than going into the development. Has anyone taken that into consideration? With the last one that you just agreed to move to, I think, September twenty-third, that has no turn lane. No way to get in, so that means it's going to stop out and block everybody up with traffic, it hasn't done a traffic study. All of these things would have been brought out if you had a planning committee, because those are the things that they're supposed to be looking for. So why can't we go back to what it should be? Them going before a planning committee, the planning committee then coming to you and letting you know what you should be looking for before they come up and ask for approval. Personally, I don't think any of it should be modified. Why are we giving anybody the opportunity to develop in our city where they have modifications that take away stream buffers, that take away the initiative that each community is already built on? So why are they getting that? Are they able to build around that? I don't think they should be able to. And I think we should think this thing through before we get up and say, yes, you can build this, and yes, you can build that. We're not in a hurry to bring any more houses in. Is there a hurry for more houses? You ask for development, you ask for economic development. So who's going to come into this city if they can't drive down the roads? That doesn't make sense. So it's time we think the whole thing through before we start saying we want to develop that. I'm against it, you're going to vote the way you want to vote, but I'm saying you haven't gotten enough information. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
I guess the only thing I can say to that is, in, you know, we talked about both motions for both cases, but in our case, and I think council member will, uh, will attest to this, I think we've had four community meetings. The first two were, were very poorly attended, uh, but the last two were very heavily attended. I was at one of them when there were about a hundred plus residents there. So, with that being said, other than that, you know, we did do traffic studies and mental staff on numerous occasions. So I, I actually think this modification gives you a better product than what was actually zoned in two thousand and, I'm sorry, six? Six, two thousand and six. I mean, we're doing away with the lower end and bringing a higher end product into the city. And that, and that's what we're trying to modify, to make it better for the city, uh, with a higher end product.
Okay, anyone else for again, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, I do want to talk to, uh, Ms. Reed.
Yes, sir.
First, your question, does this project fit our management plan?
It does.
Uh, and your rec, your recommendation is approved?
Yes, sir.
Could you explain the process for those who don't know, of, of the, uh, going to come in and get this?
Correct, you need to, so let's speak on a modification, for example. Um, the code, I believe, is section twenty-two dash twelve of the zoning ordinance identifies how modification requests is applied. Uh, it allows for there to be an application received by my department, applications reviewed by staff, and once it is vetted, to be approved and ready to move forward with you, recommendations provided indirectly to council. Because the code identifies as council being the body who makes those decisions. It's been that way when it was Fulton County, it's that way as South Fulton, I'm not sure where it's being...
Excuse me a minute, I got another conversation going on. Go ahead.
So it was that way, um, with the county, we adopted that exact code, the way that it was, and it brought over the same exact process for modifications.
Is there any communication between the developer and community?
They have been communication, um, that communication and that agreement is amongst the two bodies. Uh, staff does not get involved in regard to the agreement that they have amongst themselves, but there is a communication that he can speak more so long than I can. And if I can, and one more thing, sir, um, with regards to the schools, um, every staff report that you will receive will show, including comments from either GDOT, MARTA, uh, any outside agency, schools and counties, whoever may be affected by any development changes, we provide this information to them, and what they provide back to us is what we provide to you. So you're always, every zoning case that I bring before you, have sections that will identify what was brought from those different agencies.
Two things, Mr. Manager, uh, I can attest, and I see you do, I did too, I mean, I can attest to the fact that the planning commission did work. They really did. Uh, they, they, or maybe it's all, it was just a recommendation, uh, they did work. Second thing, I would say that, uh, several years ago, when the community made agreements with developers, they made it written. And, uh, that writing was part of what we got. And I know that we have nothing to do with that, all right? Uh, because I like to talk about, especially if it's about money, you know, but usually, sort of writing is a part of the document, Mr. Manager, uh, that we used to have. I think we do need to go back to that. Uh, I think more than one eye on a project is always good, uh, and even though I know that it does fit the land use plan, and that, uh, it's recommended approval, I think we need to go back and think a little bit about our processes and how we do things. You see it, you heard the arguments about, uh, one, one district focused on another district and all this kind of stuff. So, I'm just saying, we need to go back and look at those things, but the planning commission did vote, did work, and that the, uh, written documentation, because one thing about a written documentation, even though it's not enforceable by us, by us, it's always a part of the record. Uh, what happened with the planning committee, so I just want to, just want to know.
So, um, I think we're mixing up two of these, uh, developments, the one that was just heard, they have gone through the process. Um, there, even some members from the Cliftondale Overlay have sat in on some of those meetings. So they have been a part of the process, I'm not sure if there's a loop that needs to be closed with their communication, but it has happened. In regards to this one, and, and let me speak in regards to the residents coming together and getting things in writing. They are doing their due diligence with that, I have explained to them that the part of the city, but it will be written into the document, that's why we need additional time. So I am very in tune to these projects, I know what's happening, and I have consulted with the Cliftondale. Now, in this case, as far as the bluffs, we had over ninety, almost a hundred individuals that came to that meeting. There were several members from Cliftondale, um, Overlay there, so they were also a part, they knew what was happening, they knew what was going on. So there's, this is not a new case, and again, this has been in front of this council, this is the fourth time. So, I, I think, you know, what we're setting, and my big thing is community engagement as well. That's why we had that big meeting with ninety-some people. I promoted, I made sure people came out and their voices were heard, and then we even had a follow-up meeting after that. More people, more voices, so they knew what the conditions were being signed. So I'm just saying, it's, it's time to move this development forward in regards to the bluffs. We're going to take some time on the second one, but this one right here, this is a better product than Fulton County was giving us. So now, this is a gated community, it is seventy percent brick, so it is increasing the value of what's going to be coming around that area. So, from my opinion, I am ready to move forward, we can do whatever, but I'm explaining to you that I, I stand with the staff's recommendation.
That's good, I like the idea of you getting the document from the, from the...
I have no doubt in my mind that, um, my colleague did her due diligence by her residents. But again, when we have jurisdictions that share roads, share intersections, and when you have one side of the street that's District Two, one side of the street that's District Three, I do feel, yes, this did come before several times, this is the fourth time it has come before, or the fifth time, but what I will tell you is that I was not aware of any community meetings. And although these projects don't sit in District Three, it does impact District Three. So my residents asked me to vote no on this project because they don't feel like they were thoroughly, uh, communicated to. And so I'm going to do what my constituents asked me to do.
Okay, any further discussion? Go ahead, let's get here.
I, I would like to know if the traffic study has been done, or particularly one?
Which one?
The one that we are talking about.
Yes, it has. Okay. Traffic studies have been ordered, been done, and completed on both of these projects, this is why I feel...
And, and, and the, um, and maneuvering, you know, the street, whether or not the street, the way that the street is going to be laid out, is, is it wide enough to accommodate the bus and the turnaround?
So the school board, uh, once this development was developed, the school board did, it was sent through the planning commission to the school board for them to weigh in, and there was no opposition in regards to that.
All right, any further discussion?
And again, like I said several times, you brought this item back because of site distance, I've traveled to the site and things of that nature. So at this point in time, I mean, we've done our due diligence.
Now, if, if, do I have a motion on the second one?
No, sir, you don't.
Okay, I was going to add a motion.
I would like to make a motion to go ahead and approve, um, modification M nineteen dash zero zero one for the bluff at Camp Creek, um, modification nineteen dash zero zero two, um, for Camp Creek Village Phase One, and, that's it? Second. Second.
How do you move the second? Any further discussion? Hearing that all goes in favor, that passes.
I need to put it on the record.
Yeah, passes six to one. Councilwoman Lewis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Next item will be the first reading, excuse me, of the FY-20 budget.
I'm sorry. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. Yes. We have a public hearing, please, ma'am. Because we have done a public hearing.
It is listed in number eight.
This is public hearing for ordinance to adopt fiscal year 2020 budget for each fund of the city of South Fulton, Georgia, appropriating the amounts drawn in each fund as expenditures, expenses, adopting several items of revenue anticipation prohibiting expenditures or expenses from exceeding the actual funding of that year.
Okay, yeah. Go ahead, Ukraine.
Good evening, Mayor, the city council. This is the last portion of our budget process. So we have the budget, we prepare the budget. The city manager presents the budget to the mayor and the council. And we have got presentations that we have done throughout. Then, the main part of the budget adoption is to have public hearings so that the residents can have an opportunity of giving the overview, and if they have questions, they have got some suggestions, it's the governing vote to listen to the residents. So we have today a public hearing, and we have another public hearing, second public hearing next week on Wednesday, the eighteenth. And we'll read the same way as they have read to show how much revenues are and how much expenses are. So the same thing I'm presenting today, I will also present next week, and the ordinance is the one that will be adopted, going to adopt the budget with the ordinance. So now, first page here is just to tell us the procedures that the local government budget is supposed to, the local government is supposed to have an official fiscal year, and our fiscal year for the city of South Fulton is October one through September thirtieth of the following year. Each municipality prepared a proposed budget and submitted to the mayor, and the city manager did present the budget to the mayor, which is before, but find the public that the budget proposal is available, which we did, we have signed to the budget. And the public are able to see the budget online, they are able to see the budget with the clerk's office. Conduct public hearing, that's what we are doing now, and we will be doing that again next week. Then thereafter, adoption of the budget, the adoption can be made with a resolution or can be made with an ordinance. Hence, we are going to adopt it with an ordinance. Adopt budget amendments by ordinance or resolution. So all our amendments, once the budget has been adopted, there will be several amendments during the fiscal year. Those amendments are done through ordinances. This is a summary of our painted budget. Our painted budget budget is up to one hundred and five million nine hundred and four thousand four hundred and two. That is revenue versus expenses. This is the summary of our total budget of one hundred and five nine hundred four zero two. We have general fund budget is seventy-three million dollars. And we have E-911, it does, we have revenues, because revenues of E-911 comes from general fund. We have restricted funds. Restricted funds are all grant funded, so they are all grant revenues that we see from various grants that we have. Then we have hotel motel. We are projecting to have one hundred, two hundred and forty thousand in the upcoming year. And the hotel motel has got the condition that we have to spend that money in the fiscal year that we have received. We have chase price money that is about seventy-three point five billion dollars. And the capital projects, nine point four million dollars. Southwest, we are projecting to have five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. A total revenue for all funds is one hundred and five million nine hundred and four hundred and two. Corresponding expenses, our general fund is sixty-nine point one million dollars. All the American fund is ten thousand dollars. If nine-one-one is two million dollars, then we have got restricted is two million, four point one million dollars. Hotel motel is still the same. We have revenue here, we have expenditure of twenty-four thousand. Chase price is the same revenue versus expenses, five eleven point five million dollars. The capital projects, a total of eleven point one million dollars. And the Southwest, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We're expecting, if nothing changes, we will service the debt by nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. General fund proposed revenues, as you all know, that the majority of our revenues are coming from taxes. So eighty-seven percent of our general fund is money from taxes. Licenses, that include business license, is five percent. Files and forfeiture, we see another five, it's point five percent. Charges and fees is one percent, which is six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Other financing sources is four point three, and that's the total of seventy-three million dollars that we have. Four point three is from grants, as we have already said, eighty-six percent. A total of a hundred percent. This is where the money goes. This is where your taxpayer money goes. Regulatory is two percent. Executive, it's a four point nine percent. General services, it's nine point three percent. Community involvement and economic involvement is six percent. Judicial is one point four percent. Public safety, as with all other municipalities everywhere, is the biggest portion of the money. It's the forty-six point six percent. That's in fire, police, and E-911. Tax appropriation is seven point six percent. We have debt servicing is one point two percent. And that's still, we think, we are better lucked, because most communities you find off the debt may go up to five, ten percent. As we just discussed, we still want one point two percent. Capital projects is two point two percent. Public works, sixteen percent. That's second from public safety. Then the last one is other financing uses, that's a one point six percent of a hundred percent, and seventy-three million eight hundred and twenty-one nine fifty-two. That's general fund. This is the investments that the city is doing in various departments. That's capital projects, summary of capital projects. So community involvement will have seventy-six thousand dollars. General services will have the one hundred and forty-nine services, one hundred and forty-nine thousand. General services is not attributed to any department, actually, it's the entire city. So every department benefits from general services. IG is three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Fire, two point five million dollars. Tax appropriation is having the land share of four point seven million dollars. Police, one point one million. Transportation, that's public works, part of public works, two million dollars. For a total of eleven point one million dollars in capital projects. This is just the same information, but in graphic format. Tax and recreation is probably two percent. Then you have thirty-three percent of fire. You have transportation, ninety percent. You have police, eleven percent. Community involvement, one percent, and general services is two percent. Proposed capital funding, where do we get the eleven point one million dollars? How do we fund it? One point six million dollars, which is fifteen percent of the capital spending, will come from general fund. We are planning to get loan through URA with seven point seven million dollars. That's the three percent of the capital project. CIP, that's the capital improvement project that has already been assigned, three hundred and eight, this is the money that we have at hand, that will give a deposit or a down payment, and this is the hundred percent for fireside, that's three percent. You add all those ones, you come to eleven point one million dollars. Funding sources is still the same. General fund is fifteen percent. Loan through URA is three percent. And loan through other borrowing will give nineteen percent. Then we have the money that we have, eight hundred and thirty-nine IG, is the three percent of the total spending. This is the summary of how much in the general fund. We talked about the seventy-three million revenues, we have seventy-three million expenses, then we have nothing here. Then we get in general fund, this is the beginning balance we had, negative eight point six million dollars. Should we happen to have some money, there is eight hundred and seventy-one four ninety-one, that we are expecting to be as our fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. However, within this, if you know fund balance, you have committed, there is some money that has already been committed here. We have some money that has already been assigned. And when you move all those ones, you may end up with an assign that you might use it, maybe it will be six hundred, five hundred, this is just projection. We have other items that we pay in advance. Insurance, we pay in advance. Payroll, that is in the September, we will have to pay that one in October. So it may look like seven one, but at the end of it, it may not be there. That's why it's not that easy to say, yes, we have fund balance, no, we won't have fund balance, because you don't know how you end by September the thirtieth. So if that goes, that means we still have seven point eight million dollars negative in fund balance. That's different from cash flow. Grants is this, we have four point one grant, and if we move that one, at the end, we end up again with the nothing. Then we have hotel motel, twenty and forty. We are expecting to spend the whole of that, and we end up again with the, almost the zero. Fund balance is eight and five, we don't spend that are in restricted of the hotel motel. Chase price is the same, seventeen point five, and we expect you to spend the whole of that and end up with the zero. Capital projects, again, we will have nine point four, spend nine point four, we have nothing. At the end of it, if we have all these funds, we still end up with the negative point seven, seven point seven million dollars. That's the end of the public hearing, and at this time, the floor will be Mayor.
Any questions, Council? So this time, your floor for the comment?
Public comments, and some of these things that are there, you may have addressed some of these things, the questions that may be coming up may have already been answered.
Do you need the public comment?
Yes.
Good evening. I wish you'd go call your night.
Coming back to the floor?
Yes.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, dear Councilor. How are you tonight? My name is Kavil Moore. I live at five one eight zero Marie Trace, and I'm here to talk about the budget and the concerns that I have with the budget. And it pertains to five areas. One, an insufficient fund balance. Two, there needs to be a reduction in the 2020 proposed budget due to the increases. Four, three, how are you going to repay your CIP? Four, the amount of money of outsourcing of eleven million dollars to Jacobs. And three, your organizational chart as relates to best practices in terms of where some departments should be located. So first, let me deal with insufficient fund balance. All of you members of Georgia Municipal Association, and all of you members of the National League of Cities, and both of those groups tell cities that you should have anywhere between two percent and five percent of your general funds in your fund balance. Now, your CFO just indicated that we have a negative seven million dollars in fund balance. Now, that means that as a city, we're not even in compliance with the best practices by the two organizations in which all of you are members. And so what I urge you to do is to reconsider an appropriate fund balance of at least two to five percent, just in case we have a natural disaster, a water main break, or something occurs, there is a fund balance to address. He gave you two figures tonight. One dealt with your general fund of seventy-three million, the other one dealt with your additional funds, which are your enterprise zones, your hotel motel, and all those other things that are restricted, which means you can't really use those, which means that you have to actually look for your fund balance out of your seventy-three eight thirty-two, seventy-three eight one nine nine nine-two. That's what I'm requesting, that you come in compliance with a fund balance. Two, let's talk about your proposed increases. Rome is not building today, and I know you guys are in a hurry, I know, to make it right, and you're looking great. However, your increases overall, since we've become a city, are a little bit alarming to me. We started out with revenues of fifty thousand dollars when we became a city, and now we're at seventy-three million. However, in terms of our expenditures, we went from forty-three million, we did an amended budget, which got us to fifty-four and nineteen, and what you're requesting was seventy-eight million. That's almost double in two years in terms of our expenditures. And I think we're in a hurry to get there, but I would ask, rather than move forward on the proposed increases that you requested, that you do a reduction in order to put money in the fund balance. The next one, how do we fund our CIP? It's great to have in your budget all of these items that pertain to your CIP. I think what is concerning to me is that we need to understand that loans and loans are paid back from the general fund. It's just not money out there. Okay. Is that my time?
All right. Good. Can you just say the CIP?
Oh, capital improvement plan. Okay. I didn't know if my time is up, I don't want to be disrespectful. Is it up? No? Okay.
I can't see the clock.
Okay, so, and the capital improvement programs are really, really great. I'm just not quite sure that we want to borrow almost eight million dollars and then have to take that out of the general fund. The last thing is that, when I saw that we were paying Jacobs to outsource eleven million dollars, I really think we probably could have brought that in-house for less than eleven million. That's quite a bit. And so I would ask that you reconsider the outsourced of eleven million to Jacobs, and that you either rehire those wonderful people who were public works, that worked for Fulton County, or rehire somebody, because I think it's less than eleven million dollars. And the last thing I want to talk about is your organizational chart in terms of best practices. I'm glad that it was pulled from the agenda tonight. However, I do have some concern about code enforcement going over to the police department. Your code enforcement guys are not certified, and you don't want to turn them into police officers. They really do need to remain code enforcement officers and not a part of the police department. The other area of concern, which I think really raises pride, is that every time you put permitting under economic development, I'm warning that somebody's taking money on the table. You cannot ask a person that goes out and gets businesses to then give them permits. That is not best practices. So I would ask that you reconsider that, and that you actually, there's an organization out there that talks about where departments should be in an organizational structure. DCA can provide it, GMA can provide it, and I would recommend that you look at those two agencies in terms of actually developing an organizational chart that truly fits the city of South Fulton. Last but not least... You cannot ask a person that goes out and gets businesses to then give them permits, that is not best practices. So I would ask that you reconsider that, and that you actually, there's an organization out there that talks about where departments should be in an organizational structure. D C A can provide it, G M A can provide it, and I would recommend that you look at those two agencies in terms of actually developing an organizational chart that truly fits the city of South Fulton. Last but not least, I think you guys are doing a great job, I think you're moving fast, I just ask that you slow down a little bit, and that you do things decently or to the point where I want to roll back in my taxes. So, don't spend so much money, gradually do it, and I think you'll be fine. That's all I have to say.
Hello?
Hello. My name is Reg Barnes, I am here representing the residents and neighbors of Lawrence Avenue, which is located in District Seven. I want to first thank Councilmember Baker, we contacted his office by email, and they were, my head was swimming, so, you got in touch with, contacted us so quickly, I appreciate it. And Yusuf from your office came out and took a look at our concern, Quibble Road.
Excuse me, are you, this is public comment, I mean, public here for the budget?
It's, okay, well, just one question then, on what is the line item for, from the budget that would address budgets available, money available for road repairs and constructions?
Public, they've taken note of that, public works, right?
Good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers, I'm Sir Jose Bright, I am a resident of District Four, I live at four, two-two-four Caveat Court, Fairburn, Georgia, in the Hampton Oaks subdivision. I say sir because I am a knight of honor, I was knighted by the Romanate Dynasty for my humanitarian work, and I'm also an H O A of Hampton Oaks, but I'm here today to speak in my personal capacity. My background, I've done a lot of leadership strategy and futures consulting work around the world, and what brings me here today is to talk about the budget that is before you today. What concerns me the most is that our revenue base is made primarily of homeowner property taxes, and we're looking at an eight point six million dollar deficit one hand, and then we're looking at a seven point seven deficit. If you continue to increase expenditures, as the previous speaker spoke about, and we don't increase additional revenue streams, and we don't have strong fiscal controls in place, because every time I come to the hearings, I'm always hearing about an increase in our cost, but it's not captured systemically in our budgetary process. And so we have a large senior citizen population in this city, and when our property taxes increase, our seniors will not be able to pay the increase, and from a cursory lens, just looking at the draft proposed budget, we have a very top-heavy management team, and if we have such a top-heavy management team, why are we so dependent on outsourcing So, I looked at the state of Georgia's Appropriations Committee, they're looking not only to cut their budget at the state level, but they're also looking to decrease revenue at the state level. I'm calling on you, our elected officials, to do what is right, what is good, what is fair, what is just, to move this city forward, not at the expense of us taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Michael, District Six. I saw a lot of people when they ran for office, and everybody always said, I'm going to be physically responsible. So this is the time to do it. You know, I was, you know, in school, my little sheep scan was on the other side, they had me over in thermodynamics and multiparental calculus and microbio-bio geochemistry, that type. I didn't go to the business side, the accounting side. It wasn't H B C U, it was not a T W I, it was traditionally white institution. So let me show you how they talked about it, because they made sure particularly that minorities knew what the game was. You need to have a savings account, i.e. a fund balance, that is the absolute most ignorant move that any city or person can make. You can come back and see, when people buy these houses, turn around and pull out money from the house, those are the first people who lose their homes, let's bring it back home. When I have a setup that we're pulling all kind of loans, but we fail to put money in a savings account, you're going to lose this city. So I urge you, you, if you've got to take every single department, every single councilperson, and every single employee, and start cutting some stuff off of them, not the employees, because they deserve it, but cutting some budgets out of all these different departments, I don't care if it's a couple percent, and moving that back to a fund balance, that's exactly what needs to be done. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Jewel Johnson, and I reside at four six sixty Oakley Lane in District One. There are a lot of things that have been said here tonight by other people before me, and I don't want to be redundant, but I do want to share this with mayor and council, because I am very concerned, I have been watching from the time we became a city, because it's dear to my heart that we do this the right way. And rather than be redundant, saying some of the same things that other people are saying, I'm just going to caution my mayor and my city council to be very few of you, okay? What we want you to do is the right thing, and looking back at some of the things that has occurred, I do understand that we are a new city, and I understand what we have to do in order to get there, and I respect each and every one of you, because I know it is an awesome job for all of you, believe me. But what I want to say to you tonight is that you all have a budget at home which you own, I have one that I have to run. And yes, we must save, as a child, my dad taught us, if you don't make the twenty-five cents a week, you save ten cents out of that twenty-five cents. And ladies and gentlemen, I know you all are passionate about what you want for your district, but I want you all to start thinking abroad. Yes, I represent my district, but I also represent this entire city. When you go out, you represent all of South Fulton, and this is what I want to see. I want to see us working together, I want us to stop blowing up this budget, I want you to really do your fiduciary responsibility, you are responsible for the city manager who runs the city, who in my opinion, it is no hard feelings, I hope that nobody takes this personally, but we've got to stop hiring all these people with these loaded salaries, and we're having to consult everything out, and I've been really watching that. If we're hiring people and giving them the right amount of money that they deserve and need, they should be able to do the job, we should not be contracting out as much as we contract. And one of the things that Ms. Moore said was about Jacobs, I've been saying it all along, that was the worst contract anybody with common sense could have signed or dealt with. And I don't know all the ends of it, but what I can understand is disastrous, because who's watching the henhouse on that? And I would like very much for mayor and council to consider pulling back the agreement that you all made to let twenty-five thousand dollars be contracted out to the city manager for anything that he wants to do, because you all are ultimately responsible. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, let me allow this to leave, you want to have a first dip, and I'll let you do that for me. Uh, thanks, that, that, just to be clear, our, our total budget is a hundred and five million, and I, and a two point, and the two point five percent is the fund balance that I, that we should have. Is that correct?
That's the suggested.
Okay, so, yeah, I just, we, we, we have a, I think that we have a lot of tough decisions to make, and things sound good until we actually have to do them. So, the first point of political education I would like for all of our residents to know is that we have the lowest military of any city in South Fulton County. Every other city, Capeville, Union City, East Point, College Park, all of them pay higher property taxes. For all of the time that we've been a city, and even before as a county, we never raised property taxes. We could have more money if we raised property taxes. A fund balance of two point five percent would be a two point six million dollar cut in the budget, and to get rid of our nine million, it's an eight or nine million dollar fund balance, that's eleven point six million dollars in cuts. We can do that. Your streets probably won't get cleaned or cut as much, they won't get swept as much, some of your parks that you've asked us to fix up, some of them with mold or whatever, those things won't happen, because, because when we cut budgets, if you're saying, let's not cut salaries and let's cut budgets, when, when those cuts happen, everyone wants to make cuts, until the cuts come to something that they care about, so everybody wants to cut everything else but the things that they care about. And so, I, I don't want you all to think that we are being foolish, most of the expenses that we have, particularly in this U R A, are things that our residents came to us and said, our parks need, our fields need to be redone, they haven't been done in years, the lights are falling down in our parks, we got, we have asbestos in our fire stations, we got mold in our, we got mold in our floors, nope, when are y'all going to pave my street? Like, I've been waiting all these years. So, so all of these are things that you've asked for, we can do whatever you want, but I just want you to understand that if we do it, that's it, thank you.
You are the one appropriate.
Yes.
Two minutes.
Yes, thank you, and I just also want to provide some clarity to political education about Jacobs. The reason we outsource public works is because we were with the county paying nine million dollars for public works, but we were consistently receiving complaints about the grass not being cut, the, the litter not being picked up, we don't, we, we could not afford the equipment, we didn't have a building we could afford, and so we decided to outsource to Jacobs. Now, our grass is being cut more, we still have a litter problem, but it's not as bad as it used to be when we were with the county. We don't have to worry about the overhead costs, we don't have to worry about buildings. So, when someone comes and tells you that we should consider hiring employees and taking over a department, then we got to think about overhead, equipment, and also some place where these people are going to work out of. We got to talk about salaries and benefits, remember, we adopted a pay compensation, where we're not going to pay anybody below fifteen dollars. And then, on the county side, they were making lower than fifteen dollars an hour, and so we have made the best decision in the past two years in order to provide the level of service and increase the level of service that you, as residents, have requested. And so, I just don't want you to be misled by some of the rhetoric that was spewed today. We are working on an exit plan to eventually take over public works, and that was said from the beginning when we decided to adopt a contract with Jacobs. We said we were going to work on a three-year exit plan, three- to five-year exit plan. We cannot afford to take over a service that we were paying nine million dollars at the county. It's projected, if we take it over, it will be five million dollars, and we would have to decrease the services that you are currently being provided.
Two minutes, Mr. Gergen.
I just want to say that, being the finance person on the, on the council, and I'm not the only one, I have concerns, I have as much concerns as each of you that came to the mic and have expressed. And earlier today, we, you know, had our discussion, earlier today, I talked about almost everything that came up, and the city manager said, what I'm going to do is to have an across-the-board cut of a certain percent in every department. So that did make me feel a little bit better, but I don't know what that looks like, you know, but it still made me feel a little bit better. So that's, that on, on one side. Then, on the other side, it is really true that our citizens are starved because we inherited junk, whether it was vehicles, buildings, or whatever, and some of it is an emergency, I mean, you can't let mold sit around without addressing. So some of it relates to that. The critical issue is how do you balance all of that, knowing that you really don't have enough resources. So we know that we haven't finally got there yet, but we know that we, it's painful, because we know that we can't do everything, and we know that we've got a lot on our plate, we really, really do. And so, I don't know where we're going to go, but you'll hear more by the time the city manager does whatever he's going to do, and then bring it back to us, and then we have the meeting, the meeting on the eighteenth, or whenever it is. So I just wanted to say that, just to let you know, I don't want you to leave thinking, oh my God, you know, we do have something kind of working, so we'll see what happens with that.
Okay, I just want to thank everybody for coming and giving your input on the budget. I agree that everything you all say is not our job to make it happen, and so we really appreciate you doing this for that.
Next, excuse me, next item is public comments. Speakers will be granted a total of two minutes each, and public comments will not exceed thirty minutes. Speakers will not be allowed to yield or donate that time to other speakers. Speakers will identify themselves, their addresses prior to speaking. Speakers may only address the residing officer, shall observe all rules of the forum, no debate, disrespect, or obscenity shall be tolerated. The residing officer shall rule any such individual out of order that failed to comply with the forum. I will call your names, and you will line up, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the city council and the honorable mayor, my name is Desiree Sanchez, I'm originally from New York City, I used to sit on the board, and I know it's a thankless job, so I thank you for your work, and I want to thank you in advance for all the hours that you put forth, I want to express my appreciation, and I want to challenge you. I heard a lot of comments about Jacobs and their ineffectiveness, and I'd like them to use all of their due diligence on a project here that's very close to my heart. Just moved here from Buckhead to South Fulton County to Autumn Lake subdivision. On my street, which is Crawford Court, I was told that it would be repaid as soon as my house was finished, it was the last one in there, has not been. I've told, been told that it is a South Fulton County issue, so I'm bringing it before you. I'm very thankful to my councilman Baker, who came out with Jacobs, so this might be an issue that you might put before them. They came out and they assessed the situation, and they understood and solved themselves that there are tremendous potholes, the street looks like it's a bombhead. And so I would like you to put at the top of your agenda on that budget for capital improvement, please come and repay Crawford Court. Yeah, my name is Desiree Sanchez, I'm from Autumn Lake subdivision, and I'd love you to challenge Jacobs to come out and fix that street. Thank you.
Ms. Kamara?
Hi, my name is Irene Kamara, I live in the South Hill subdivision. My question is regarding sanitation vendors, back in December of last year, I was told that T N R sanitation was an approved vendor. About a month ago, I got, received a letter from, I guess, Public Works, saying that my name was not on the list, and I need to get an approved vendor. My, I've talked to T N R sanitation, and there's a problem, I think, with communication with regards to the, um... regards to the, um, infrastructure fee, there's a five percent fee, and I'm told that they don't know who, how to get that money to the city. So, I need to know what's the status of, of that situation, and when is my name going to get in Public Works' database as a, uh, resident with an approved vendor? Thank you.
Mr. Shapie?
My name is Michael Shapie, I live in District Four, Councilwoman Miller's District, with seventy-five, twenty-four, twenty-five Hobgood Road. I brought some handouts for you today. Um, I live adjacent to, within five thousand feet of the illegal dump on Bishop Road that continues to smoke and emit, uh, toxic gases. Um, we took pictures yesterday of, of what we see. We see, uh, smoke regularly emanating from the site, and I have a, a copy of, of them for each of you, I'll hand it to you after I'm, I'm done. Uh, the EPA found in November that the testing showed that VOCs exceeded the action level for hazardous, hazardous air quality. Uh, the particular matter was at an unhealthy level for, uh, uh, people at risk, older people, uh, children. Uh, we're still breathing these, uh, gases. Um, I just, uh, spent money on Merv sixteen filters that are extremely effective, they take out ninety-nine percent of the toxic, of the VOCs from the air. Um, I do this personally at my house, I'm gonna submit the bill to the city here. What I'd like you to do, what I'd like you to do, though, is consider this, I'm, I'm submitting this more as a, as a suggestion or, uh, uh, request that you implement this kind of technology in our schools. If we can't put out the fire, if we can't stop the toxic, uh, air, then at least we should put these kinds of filters in our schools, Bear Creek School, Bear Creek Middle School, and the high school, Creekside, uh, so they can breathe, uh, clean air, takes out ninety-nine percent. We've had two community members die, and we have, have one that's in critical care right now on a respirator. All of these people have had respiratory, have had respiratory issues. The city of South Fulton has said the fire is out, it's not out, we need to reevaluate that decision, and I do wanna thank you, though, for the money that you did dedicate me for testing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Who can I pass these to?
Mr. Windush?
Good evening, mayor and council. Don Windush, twenty-two eighty, Wexford Drive, District Six. My comments relate to the city of South Fulton Police Department. Uh, in the past six weeks, I've had encounters based, uh, well, encounters with the police based on two incidents. One was a violation on my part. That was a stop off. Uh, the other was, I was a victim of an incident, it was minor, but, uh, at any rate, the police responded on both occasions. Um, and, uh, I want to mention four folks by name. The first person I didn't really get on my citation, I couldn't read her name, but Officer Badger Hummer was thirty-two. The second person was Corporal Samuel Freeman. The next person was Sherry, at the police precinct of Old National. And finally, Sergeant David Jireh here this evening. What I want you to know is, on all occasions, these folks represented the South, city of South Fulton very well. Professional, professionalism was excellent, sense of courtesy, they were all very helpful. So, we talk so much when police don't measure up, I thought it would be a good opportunity to say kudos to the police department and the training, they represented us well. Uh, and secondly, I wanna invite you all, who, if you haven't already signed up, this Saturday for the Old National Emergence Association 5K, it's a Community Unity 5K, it's our fourth annual. Uh, if you've signed up, we're looking forward to seeing you. If you haven't signed up, lace up your running shoes, and we'll see you out there at, uh, Saturday morning, eight-thirty lunch, and, uh, you'll have a good time, I guarantee you. Thanks.
Thank you.
The last three is Reg Barnes, Patricia Montgomery, and Shamika Parker.
Are you ready?
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Reg Barnes, three-nine-six-zero, Lawrence Avenue, District Seven. As I was saying, uh, we had, uh, an opportunity to work with, uh, Councilmember Baker's office, and found him very responsive. But, uh, our road is one that floods, it, it's not properly paved, it floods with even a moderate amount of rain, and the water just sits there for two or three days. Uh, it's a, a large, large portion of the road, um, and I'd like to find out what the proper way is to present this to the council or to the city, and, um, how to go about getting that on the roster of, um, roads and repairs that need to get completed. That's, oh, do I? Thank you very much.
Ms. Montgomery?
Good evening, everyone, um, to, um, Mayor Edwards and council members. Uh, my name is Patricia Montgomery, and I reside in Joshua Crossing subdivision. My address is seventy-one eighty-four Joshua Way in Fayetteville, Georgia.
Can you hear what you're talking to, Greg?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, my name is Patricia Montgomery, I reside in Joshua Crossing, and my address is seventy-one eighty-four Joshua Way, Fayetteville, Georgia. I also have a house at six-four-five-four West Fayetteville Road in Riverdale, Georgia. I've had, um, I received a letter regarding not having, um, trash at my Joshua location, but I have had trash service at my West Fayetteville Road address since I got the house in nineteen-ninety-five or nineteen-ninety-seven. I still use this service, and I have proof that I have a building in my name that I've had for over twenty years, and I don't see why I would need to have service, two trash services. And I have, I have proof of that, and I would like to leave, and I'm sorry, I'm in District Seven. May I give him a copy of this?
Yes, you can.
May I ask a question? Um, she mentioned that Jacob, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not pleased with the idea of Jacobs and the subcontracting, and you, you, I think you mentioned that you all did a proposal for three to five years with them? How many years has it been?
About a year, yeah.
You are, we have, you have, how many years?
Yeah.
And our last speaker is Shamika Parker.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Um, my name is Shamika Parker, I used to live in Bear, Bear Square, um, Hackamore and Old National. Um, Old National, um, Hackamore and Old National. My son was killed, um, crossing the street, um, comes from work in two thousand seventeen, he was supposed to graduate in two thousand eight, that didn't happen. Um, I'm asking for you all to please put crosswalks, signals, sidewalks there, because that is Cancun Marketplace, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Old National Marketplace, I'm sorry, that's what y'all call it, and it's so many businesses that care. My son got off the bus from work, coming home, he didn't make it, so the lady who hit him and killed him, she wasn't charged because there was no crosswalk there. So, I'm asking, could you please put a crosswalk there, so nobody else don't get hurt, there's so many things that happen in that area, 'cause there's no way for ongoing traffic coming in and out of the actual, um, out of the marketplace, and even also Hackamore. Um, there's only a turn and lane that you can go into Hackamore, but when you're coming from out the marketplace, there is no way for you to make a clear turn to go up, up, uh, Old National. So, I know that, I understand that DOT can put, um, I would say crosswalks and signals, you know, have, make it be something like, um, Bucky, I'm sorry, um, Houston Highway, 'cause I know there's a lot of transit that's happened there, too. Can you please help me that no one else don't get hurt? Please. Thank you.
That is the public comments. Now, we will have approval of consent agendas nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as stated by our clerk. On the consent agenda.
Second. I can move, second, is there a discussion?
Who?
Second, I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams. Any discussion? Here ain't none, all those are papers. All those are papers. They're passed. Next. Go ahead.
I would, I would like, uh, Mr. Donald, I don't know if Ms. Irene Kamara walked out of the door or not.
She just did.
But, uh, if so, I'd like, uh, just someone to provide, uh, Mr. Donald, possibly, uh, explanation to those individuals in reference to the sanitation, why it's required, what's required of them, uh, also how to reach Mr. Kerr in reference to procurement, as well as the list of those providers, uh, that are qualified. I know that Jacobs has listed, we request the list to be, um, placed on our city website.
Yes, it is on the, uh, city website, but what we're also doing is those who have, and just a quick overview, so, the state law, uh, requires that when cities are incorporated, we provide a certain number of services, if one of them is sanitation and it has to be held, uh, by every household. We have, uh, chosen in the first year, uh, the marketplace, uh, model, and so, as we have started to now do the audits, uh, mainly of our providers, we have found that all of them have not been appropriately, uh, providing the insights of who their customers are and remitting the five percent fee. And so, I know we've gone over some of those things with council, but the feedback from the residents providing the proof of, uh, having services.
What's that?
Yes.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Houston, is it possible to reach that family? Because I understand the way that we have to govern ourselves, but I just wanted somebody to get the parent, the mother's contact information. We got it, so, okay, all right, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Donald.
Got it, and so, as such, we basically, uh, I think identified, just in those couple of weeks, almost, uh, fifty, uh, homes or households that had actually had service and not been reported. I think a lot of those were with waste industries based on the boundaries and things of that nature, so they are, now they're remitting fees. Those, uh, households that have the service do not, you know, they're not in any danger or issue, they are added to, I guess, the good list, and then each of the providers has to remit their five percent fee. I think one thing that has come forward, uh, and I know that the council is evaluating this, is that as the ordinance is written, there is no written, uh, exception or statutory discount for seniors and special populations, and I know that that's something that's being considered. And so, I would expect that, uh, I know that you guys are evaluating that ordinance more, and we would expect to see that in any of them, so.
I just think that it's important for, I, I know that a lot of people may have left with cameras and they're watching.
Absolutely.
To know that that five percent is not necessarily something that the service provider has to pass on to their customers.
Correct, they do not. That is, uh, a choice that they can make, but I think what we've seen is, uh, partially because of, of all of, uh, you guys' outreach and partnership, now that they have reduced, uh, many of those fees and offerings, I think, uh, one example is in, uh, your district where they dropped the fee, I think down to where it's seventeen dollars or, or something of that nature for the full of service, it actually reduces that cost and, uh, to the customer and relieves them, uh, of the five percent. So, that, that has been extremely helpful, and we've seen that start to take on citywide as well as throughout the entire marketplace.
Okay. Ms. Williams, hold on, you go.
Yes, this is real quick, Mr. Donald, um, I've got some, uh, questions about the referendums that's going to be on the November, uh, ballot, uh, the T A D and also the homestead exemption. Is there any way that we could do a educational write-up of both of those res, uh, both of those referendums, uh, sorta like how we did the, uh, referendums before, uh, the, it was pre-referendum to the alcohol?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and so, that we can explain to residents if they go yes, what happens if they go no, what happens? Um, I'm getting a lot of questions about that.
Yes, ma'am, and so, the, uh, overview is scheduled, tentatively scheduled, after the approval of the mayor who sets the agenda for the September twenty-fourth work session, and what it will include is our, uh, proposed, uh, documents that will be notifying the public of, as well as the language associated with what will be on the ballot. And so, those activities, the, the information will be provided to council in advance, uh, overview will be on the work session, and then we plan to fully implement the campaign in the same way we did the Freeport exemption and those other referendums the previous year.
All right, Madam Chair.
Next item on the agenda is the council's second reading to approve a landing ordinance Title One, Chapter Four, Elections for the city of South Fulton. Second read.
Uh, this, um, you say what ordinance just, uh, we have some initial, um, language in our original organizing documents that speaks to, uh, elections. We saw to kinda make it plain from the beginning of the process to the end, so there are a number of references to state election laws. Um, if you recall, early in the year, we actually, uh, passed a, a resolution that, um, we would change with every election that, in the event that there's some change in, um, fees or anything specific, that way we wouldn't have to be updating our code constantly. This is what this particular ordinance seeks to do to really try to make it clear what the election process is in the city of South Fulton.
I make a motion.
I make a motion to adopt a man Title One, Chapter Four Elections of the city of South Fulton, correct ordinance for other persons for other purposes as presented.
I can move, is that in discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
And so, um, council member, uh, Rowell, I know that we talked about trying to add something in our ordinance that will prevent us facing a situation like another municipality is facing, where somebody is qualified and then someone is coming back years later to challenge whether or not they were, um, actually eligible to run and sit in office based on, um, their criminal history. And so, what I suggested is that, so, we would never be in a situation like that. Is there any way we can do, um, background checks upfront, uh, with a consent agreement? And is there a reason why we could not do that, uh, add this to the ordinance?
So, do you wanna say a little about that?
Well, uh, background checks can be done, um, if you're for the employment purposes, but are, are you all asking that you do it for people that are running for public office?
Well, the reason I'm asking is because I don't wanna find ourselves in a situation where someone lies on an affidavit, or, or, I won't say lie, but, uh, is not truthful on an affidavit, then later we find out that, um, there should have been, um, maybe if a background check hadn't done upfront on everybody who's qualified, then, you know, we can avoid finding out things later, and we, and people being challenged later in a court of law, 'cause that's happening in another municipality, and I don't wanna, it is happening, not only in another municipality, it's happening in another, well, several municipalities, and I don't wanna, um, find ourselves in that situation. So, if it's something that we can do upfront, and if people are cleared, then that's something we don't ever have to worry about.
Are they considering employees of the city of South Fulton? They're not?
No, they're not.
That might be a problem.
Can you speak to that? Cause she knows we went back on that for a long time. Because like you said, it's a current issue with the neighboring municipality. They're trying to sort and it's a legal issue. But can you speak to what you shared with me and why it's not?
Yeah, so there, so Councilwoman Ral, um, was concerned with that. And the recommendation I gave her was to leave that language out, out of the ordinance for three primary reasons. The first is that I don't think that we can even have our police department do it. I don't think that the GCIC or the, uh, whatever databases, the criminal databases they use would allow them to use the systems for that purpose. You could contract it out, but it, um, our, our PD wouldn't, would not be able to do it.
We have certain purpose codes that we're unable to unutilize for, um, the GCIC and NCIC. In Florida, there's one of those purpose codes. If you all were considered, um, City of South Fulton employees, then that's certainly a purpose code that we can utilize. But, um, there are things which have.
So the second reason is because the states, the state of Georgia mandates what the qualification requirements are. So if you get someone who says, "I will absolutely not submit" to giving you consent to, to do the background check, and you can hire someone to do it, to do it anyway with the information that you have that's available to you, but you can't force the candidate to sit for it because then it becomes a qualification requirement and you don't have the jurisdiction to make qualification requirements locally. And the third reason is that the standard for moral, for moral turpitude, which is how you can disqualify someone, is so ambiguous. The problem that you're going to run into is that if you see a conviction that you think meets that standard and you actually disallow this person to run in the election, the risk you run is that your election has to be redone if they appeal to the Superior Court and say that this was not a crime of moral turpitude. And then it also leads you liable potentially to civil damages for infringing on someone's, first of, I mean, constitutional rights to participate in the election.
So, so I think, uh, I think you said, we'll, we'll kind of watch and see what plays out with this, this case and, and see if this is something we need to revisit, but we want to keep it clean at this point. I think the recommended recommendation of the city attorney.
Well, if you have suspicion, my recommendation is to always report those to the district attorney because they are charged by the law and they have the duty to put those prosecution. And, you know, you can do a considerable amount of time in jail if you qualify your election affidavit.
Okay, uh, we got the motion and the second. Are you ready to vote? All those are papers. That passes. You have a question.
Next item on the gen, agenda is council approval of resolution of City of South Fulton to Fulton County Development Authority requesting recognition of territorial boundaries of the South Fulton Development Authority.
Um, the purpose of, uh, this resolution is just to ask who can, who respect their boundaries. So I would like to motion, make a motion, um, that we pass this, uh, this resolution.
Second.
Uh, it wasn't ranging for me, but this is posing a thing upon the Fulton County Development Authority. You know, whereas if someone came in with this to the, to the business, they could.
So are they legally required to respect the boundaries? They're not legally required to respect the boundaries. However, we are one of the only cities, I think occasionally they do, um, tax abatement deals. Melan has actually sent those pieces to SISler over the last thirty days. Uh, we are primarily, almost exclusively, the only remaining city that they use tax and, uh, abatement deals and tax incentive deals in their jurisdiction. And you can't force them to stop. The council can do that, the development authority cannot do that will not make the county happy. So for that reason, most counties, when the city's asked them to kind of respect their boundaries, for that reason, they can't.
I got you. I just want to make it clear. Um, looking around now. Let me get this. Wait, Raul, she was in queue first. Go ahead.
I was in queue first. Um, so let me get an understanding. You're saying that the City of South Fulton, you just have to buy the, the City of South Fulton is the only city that the development authority is doing deals in? Well, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get an understanding of what you just said.
So based, so for clarification, I reviewed the minutes for the agenda of the Fulton County Development Authority. And we are primarily the only jurisdiction that they're doing the tax abatements and tax incentive deals for developers.
Okay, so I, I'm in the Georgia Economic Development Academy and we go from city to city every month for a class. Our last city was Roswell. And so that is inaccurate. The City of Roswell reported to a class full of state legislators, full of other municipalities, full of other county officials, that they do, most of their deals were Fulton County Development Authority. When we visited Sandy Springs, it was Fulton County Development Authority. The mayor said that they work with mostly, they have a development authority. Roswell has a downtown development authority, but most of their deals are brokered through the Fulton County Development Authority. Alpharetta, most of their multi-million dollar deals are brokered through the Fulton County Development Authority. And so I don't want to, now that I have thrown myself into, uh, more economic development training classes, um, I don't support this because I want the ability. And right now, as it stands today, if I had a multi-million dollar deal, I would go to the Fulton County Development Authority because they have the experience, they have the staff, they have the expertise, and they would be the ones that I would trust my deal to, to make my deal happen. So I am not going to, I can't support this because this, to me, comes across as a little divisive. And I think the better way to deal with this is if you want Fulton County Development Authority to give you, um, uh, I think having a conversation and sitting down with them and expressing how you feel versus doing some type of resolution. So they work with a lot of cities, a lot of cities in Fulton County. Yes, I did read that article that Atlanta, uh, uh, put out. And one of the things that was stated in that article is because a lot of people go to the Fulton County Development Authority to do business in Atlanta is because they have found it very complicated to get deals done. And so they have found it easier to work with the Fulton County Development Authority. Thank you.
Can I clarify too? So this, this resolution doesn't prevent that relationship? So the City of South Fulton can still work with the development authority? It just asks the development authority not to do it without South Fulton consent? So it's more of a notice requirement?
Okay. All right, Ms. Ral. And then Ms. Go ahead.
I've got to have to, um, agree with, um, with Ms. Williams. I'm in the same Georgia Academy training and they have done a number of jobs in cities. Again, we are just in Roswell, um, helping with some of their hotels and things they were bringing in. And so, um, I understand the intent. I just think our approach, we should reconsider how we do it and try to figure out a way to have some, um, mutual understanding of how we will work together or how, when they're coming into the City of South Fulton. Also, they own a lot of land in, um, our city. So I think we should be mindful of that and so we don't want to create, um, a situation where it's antagonistic, uh, where they say, okay, we just don't have to have communication. So I think we need to have that conversation sooner than later because Fulton County own land, land throughout our city. And I've actually requested, um, that they work on a map to show us that so we have a better understanding. So, um, I just think the approach, I get the intent, but we don't want to, um, kind of chop off our hands and fight our face.
Okay, Ms. Go ahead.
Um, one of the main reasons, because I wasn't even aware of this, but one of the main reasons why I wrote this was because, um, a financial advisor, you know, gave me the information and said that it is important to do it and it's very important to do it this way. And I had the discussion, you know, with you and we talked about it. So I am very, very comfortable with it and it's nothing about it being antagonistic. The only thing about it is it's just saying, we respect your rights and you respect our rights and that's it. It's just that simple. And in addition to that, we really know what we're dealing with. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, since it's already been said, the cameras are rolling, in reference to, uh, how we feel about it, I think that we have to do better. When I say we have to do better, I think that when we open our mouths up here and speak about what we would do if we were other people with deals, saying that we would go elsewhere other than the City of South Fulton and speaks, uh, about how we feel about ourselves. So I believe, uh, well, I was just going to give Councilwoman Gillian a whole lot of credit for coming up with this because I didn't know, I know the same bond attorney spoke about this action being a request. It's just a request for deference. We're in our infancy. We all voted for this development authority to move forward and be created. Why would we want to redirect business to Fulton County? So when we say that we lack, uh, the ability to do this or the ability to function as a development authority, it just speaks to how we feel about ourselves. And we have to be very, very careful about putting that message out to people who may be interested in bringing business to the City of South Fulton. I think also that, um, the letter in itself, we can't stop them. We can't. It's just a simple letter requesting deference because we have our training wheels on now. Given that we have our training wheels on now, we want to grow, we want to flourish. Allow us that opportunity. We know we can't stop you. I think the letter is just a request for deference. And I'm asking that we stop with the messaging as if like we can't move forward and grow our development authority to be just as strong as Invest Atlanta and Fulton County's Development Authority as well.
All right. Ms. Gordon?
So, um, I was just conversing with Councilwoman Ral. Um, my understanding was that it was not being divisive, that it was more of just putting them on notice. But she pointed out something as far as the language saying that, um, to just, for us to discontinue, I guess, development-related activities under the department. And I, I mean, it does sound, it doesn't necessarily sound like that's putting them on, asking for them to notify us if it says cease and desist. Is that what the intent of this was? Because what you just said was that we just want to know a courtesy of what's happening as far as development activities.
Well, it's, it's, it's more of give us notice of what you're doing and allow us to say that we agree or, or we don't agree.
But that's not what that says.
Right.
So that's why I'm just trying to get an understanding because I supported it, but I didn't, you know, I don't see it as being divisive as such they're saying. So I'm trying to get an understanding that that last clause is pretty much saying, discontinue any development activities within the Fulton County or whatever.
Well, it says without the City of South Fulton Development Authority's consent. And here's, here's a byproduct too, Fulton County's doing these deals. Well, if Fulton County does the deal, they don't have to spend the money with South Fulton. So for example, they will do a tax abatement deal. They can make eighty thousand dollars, um, from that one deal and then they can go fund the brave statement. Whereas if South Fulton Development Authority does the deal and funds come here, then your development authority is obligated legally to use those monies for the City of South Fulton. So the purpose is more of to make sure the funding goes to the city versus other areas throughout the county.
Okay. Um, all right, Ms. Ral.
So I do think that the South Fulton Development Authority can, at one, at some point, you know, grow and be stronger. Um, but what I am saying to you today, if I had a multi-million dollar deal, I am going to go where there's experience and where I feel comfortable. And so I, this, right now, our development authority is just being formed. There, I have, there's no secret. I have to express some of my pleasures for some of the things that's going on. I'm not going to get into that. And so for me, I want to be able to have the option to do either or. I want to be able, if I have a deal and I feel like Fulton County Development Authority can get it done, I want to be able to use a development authority that is for the entire county. Or if at some point our development authority gets to the point where I feel and I trust they can handle multi-million dollar deals, then I can go there. Of course, I would want the money in our city, but right now, if I have a deal, I'm going to go where I feel comfortable. And I'm going to direct developers where I feel comfortable.
Okay, we go, Mr. Cleveland. I ask for a vote.
Um, yeah, I, I, I do think it's worth noting because this, this came up for the DDA. Um, and we do actually have projects that are coming. Um, they are multi-million dollar deals and we are not million dollar deficit. We just heard people say that we have a deficit. So there, there are two things. One, when, when deals go elsewhere, we lose money. We also lose control over the projects. So we have a considerable amount, more amount of control over the projects than even in issuing the bonds. Uh, some of the developers that we have been working on have actually redesigned their projects because they want to issue, they want us to issue their odds. Um, if they, they, what they could do now is put a housing project up on your street and not tell us at all and have a four-bedroom housing project for section eight tenants in your neighborhood without any notice to us. And, and we get no money from it. So I, I don't think that's wise. But this may all not really be important because my question is, are there any projects that the Fulton devel, the Fulton County Development Authority is doing right now in our city?
So the finance direct, I mean, not the finance director, your financial advisor, um, he just enjoys in his pastime looking at, you know, minutes for development authorities. Uh, and he, he frequently texts me and says, "Oh, my God, here's another forty, here's another fifty." So from the text that he provides me, it looks like they're averaging maybe about sixty thousand a month in tax incentives and tax abatement deals.
Sixty thousand a month?
That's what it appears from the text that he sent me. I haven't investigated any of these texts, but I, if you look at my text from him, I have a frequent number. Every time he looks and he sees a deal, you know, he sends me the, a copy of the minutes and in a little place, he knows with his mouth open saying, you know, we got to get this money to be rerun, he says.
So then I would ask, I didn't know that. I, I, that, that is shocking. I, I would love it if Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, if we could on our, on, on some upcoming city council agenda, if we could get a presentation from our, um, financial advisors on how many of these deals are happening right now in our city limits. Not only because I want to know how much money we're losing each month, but I also just, I think our residents deserve to know what is being built that we don't know about. Uh, and that we aren't, we aren't in control. Like, we just had a whole big meeting where people were upset that we weren't in control of the project. So I just want to know how many other projects like that are happening under the Fulton County Development Authority, as you guys have discussed agenda.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. Raise your vote. All those are papers. That passes?
I wanted to run the record. I voted no.
All right. Okay, it passes five-two. No being, uh, Councilwoman Ral and Councilwoman Witz.
Next item on the agenda is council approval of a resolution by the City of South Fulton to promote tourism and development to incorporate South Fulton Convention and Visitors Bureau to approve adoption of ballot and opponent coordinate of the board's direction to the Bureau.
I'll hesitate a motion.
Um, I move that we approve, uh, but, and before I, uh, say, ask for approval of that this is going to help us remember, um, it was reported that we were restricted to how we spend our hotel motel tax. And so this is what this authority is going to, uh, uh, be responsible for doing the portion that helps promote our city. So I'm asking for council to approve resolution of the City of South Fulton and, I'm sorry, uh, adoption of, where are we? Okay, South Fulton Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Second.
Thank you.
I'll be moving in seconds. Any, any discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Ral. If, if we didn't, uh, Ms. Ral, I got your turn.
Under this particular ordinance, uh,
Under this particular ordinance, or resolution, under the category that deals with the hospitality industry, I know we have hotels, we have short-term rentals. Do we have any vacant rent? I mean, two out of the three people are from the short-term rental. I just think like, might need to be more balanced. Can anybody speak to that, Ms. Willis?
We see a recommendation, two out of the three are short-term rentals.
On page, on page two, that I...
Okay, page two, so how the manager start with arson and so?
So, it's the second category, the three board members representing the lodging industry.
Okay, so what do you say?
Again, two of the people are...
Do you have a recommendation?
Well, I mean, again, I'm looking at, I'm just asking, do we look or consider somebody who represented, you know, if you have vacant rent or anything like that?
Do we have any vacant rent in the city of South Fulton?
I don't know, but I, but I'm definitely concerned that two of the P, two of the three are short-term rentals.
So, you just basically asked a question?
Yes, a question.
That'd be a consideration. Okay. All right, Ms. Cleese, you in?
Oh, okay. Just real quick, when we helped Councilwoman Willis put this together, we were looking for people who pay hotel motel tax, that's what that represents. And short-term rentals are required to pay hotel motel tax. And of course, they only have one hotel in the municipality. So, we invited that hotel, and then we picked the most two recent short-term rental companies.
So, they actually have the licenses?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, those are licensed short-term rentals in the city.
Well, that's good to see.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Cleese, that's it.
Just a point of information, or a question, I'm sorry. These, this, the hotel motel funds, they are dedicated, I'm sorry, it's not, I'm losing my words. They're, they're like, that, it's in a separate account. Is that correct? So, if we, if we do not access this money now, it will roll over into twenty twenty, that we lose it? It doesn't go back to the general fund, because we can't, we have to segregate it from the general fund. What happens to it if we don't use it?
You have to finish within the fiscal year.
What happens? Do we give it back? We lose it?
You'll be penalized.
Nothing will happen. That's the mistake we did last year, because we didn't allocate it, and we were written up. And the state will be looking into us if we are not going to do that by September thirtieth. This money has to be spent by September thirtieth. The one that is restricted, the one that is in general fund, we use it.
Right. So, my question is, or what? What happens if we do not, if there's two hundred and forty thousand dollars?
You're out of compliance.
So, we get fined? I'm not, like, what happens? Because we have, right now, if you're saying we have to use it by December thirtieth, you're telling me that we have twenty days to spend two hundred and forty thousand dollars?
He has the way of spending it. He has the way of spending it.
Do you mind if I answer that?
Sure.
I submitted a budget along with this. Not only did I do that, all of this was on a work session last week. And so, we've had three weeks, plus we had a work session, and I included all of the documents. Our, right now, of the budget of how this money was gonna be spent, to the T.
Yeah. So, Councilwoman Willis, we did not spend it all in twenty days, what happens?
There was no...
We lose it.
We lose it. We're out of compliance. And the auditor also...
You have to give it back.
Yes, and the auditor.
That's all I ask. My question is, what happens to it? Thank you.
All right, let's vote.
I would, it's, he'll second it.
All right, let's vote. All those in favor? That passes unanimously.
No.
I'm sorry. There's a note for Ms. Cleese.
Next item, is approval of a resolution and intergovernmental agreement with Fulton County to provide animal services to the city of South Fulton.
She's making a presentation.
Who's making the presentation?
Ms. Douglas.
So, for this item, did you read all right that? Good. So, first, the city attorney will kinda speak to, the city attorney will kinda chime in, and then Ms. Reed will close this out.
So, this, this item, you've basically been operating under this agreement, but we held off with executing it, because there was a little bit of dissatisfaction with the services that were being provided. However, so we can use the fiscal nineteen, two thousand and nineteen year funds to pay the outstanding invoice, the recommendation would be to authorize the agreement. And then if the services don't improve, there is an opt-out provision to opt-out, look at alternative providers, or consider bringing these services in-house.
I don't know why we have such a difficult time today. My first question is, so, are we going into a four-year automatic agreement with this? Because this doesn't end until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. Am I sounding this incorrectly? For the term agreements?
So, I'm actually pulling it up. So, there's a provision in here that allows, there's a termination provision. Yeah, so it's Article seven. And it says...
What is that article? They're not focusing on Article two under term agreement. So, that means if we do that, we will be in a government agreement with Fulton County until December two thousand and twenty-two.
But you have a sixty day...
Yeah, if you leave the last sentence, that's what Councilwoman Gillian said, we're coming to you.
And I get that, but I'm just saying, that concerns me. The other thing is that we talked about their response. The, under Article one, a purpose and intent, the county agrees to provide a response to requests for animal control within the city, within the time period specified. Where are the time periods? Because that has been the biggest issue, is that they don't come. So, this language to me is still kinda vague, as far as how they're going to respond to our requests.
So, the county has a contract with the vendor, and the county, the county attorney advised me that the service they can offer is what their vendor is contractually, contractually required to provide. So...
What is that?
Well, I would have to get the county's contract to see what the service requirement times are. But there's a section of the county's contract that states to that subsection.
So, that kinda still leaves us in the same position, as far as being in limbo, and not having to respond when there's a horse, or a bear, or something in the middle of the road. Because that, and they don't come. I, that was my biggest thing in the very beginning, is that we still don't have anything that says when they will respond to the city. When will the county contact their vendor to respond to the city's request of work in the IBA?
Well, we, we would contact the vendor directly, but from my recollection, and I would have to confirm, because it's been a while since I spoke to the county attorney on this, but my recollection is that loose livestock, they would have up to a day. I think it's up to twenty-four hours. But I would have to confirm that, and that's the contract that the county has with the vendor.
Now, how much is this contract valued at?
So, we budgeted for the fiscal year nineteen at eight seventy-four.
So, this is for twenty nineteen?
Correct. So, if I can add to that, I have encumbered for this, for the entire fiscal year. We have not been able to process the invoice, because there has not been a contract attached. To a lawyer going into a negative eight seventy-four, we need to process that before October first.
I understand.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure we...
I got that part, but just going to say that the next, maybe we'll talk about that, maybe you and I can skip it. I just, the next year, the next fiscal year, just doesn't feel like this is one. And when are we planning to bring this in-house?
Yes, from having you said that. So, we are currently in the process of having a discussion with someone who will be able to tell us the benefits of bringing in, really doing a comparison of other cities, how they're functioning, what the staff looks like, what the salaries look like, all of that, comparing our size to other size, community, the needs and so forth. And so, we're, we're in the process of doing that now. We actually have a meeting scheduled this week, so we're working on that.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Gillian? Ms. Gillian?
Just a couple of things. Compensation and consideration. So, under it, they have this item, vehicle replacement cost, the total cost is eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars over five years. So, that's approximately fifty-two thousand, thirty-seven dollars a month. I don't know what kind of vehicle they're talking about. And, and I don't know why it costs so much. So, there's, so, so, so there's not enough detail for that, that's number one. The next thing is that it says the five-year capital improvement plan, and the total cost is two point five million dollars, which is five hundred thousand dollars per year. I don't know what they mean by capital improvement cost, because that's not spelled out. Then there's an annual maintenance cost, but there's no dollar amount. There's too many unknowns in this document. And then lastly, and this happens too often, this sentence underneath this chart, quest chart, said, "The payment amount for each jurisdiction will be based on its monthly call," okay, "for the service. An example calculation is included in this document, attachment one." There is no attachment. So, it's difficult for me to vote on anything like this that doesn't have all of the information, particularly related to the cost.
And they still don't pick up the end.
Let me say this, that you're starting, that you're starting to negotiate with a, another vendor, whatever he's been busy. That last sentence that she just said, has been in my car for fourteen years. Animal control, even in unincorporated South Fulton County, was extremely high. And one of the reasons that it was tight, is because it's, it's per call.
Not for rent?
Now, for pit bull coming in your neighborhood, ten of y'all send it. That's ten calls.
It is, but they don't call.
On the same dog. Well, they coming there?
They still call.
I mean, ten calls. Now, let me tell you what some of the other cities have done. I mean, what Palmetto does is, and I'm gonna say we have to do this, but that's just Palmetto. They're small. But they, what they do is, they have police come out and inspect it before they call, before they ask them to send a truck out. You know, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not advocating that. I'm just saying people are looking at alternatives to cut that cost down. And it has been a cost saver for them. So, as you talk to someone, please talk about the fact that you have, it is a per-call deal, and that you could have twenty calls that can go for one, one particular dog, or cat, or whatever they need. All right?
I got one.
She had to go when I took her.
They really don't have enough information in this document for us to look at.
Okay, now, I'll get, I'll get you with the testimony. Ms. Jackson, will you move that?
Ms. Reed, I am understanding you to say that this eight thirty-two, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, five ninety-two, that's for this past year. So, we gotta pay that here.
Yes, ma'am. We do not pay that before October first. That, as the finance, the treasurer just mentioned, that that money leaves, meaning you have to spend it this fiscal year. So, we have to be able to invoice, pay out those invoices. We have not been able to pay out those invoices this year, because the contract has not been signed. And they provided to us where they have provided services, as far as dates, times, all that stuff.
I didn't see that. But all the cost, the cost is what here, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand?
Was before.
Yes.
Talking about the invoices, she's saying it wasn't budgeted?
Yeah, so we budgeted eight seventy-four for fiscal year twenty nineteen.
Okay, so that we have to pay anyways.
Yes, ma'am. They provided the services already.
Okay. So, who's in court, then you're gonna sit down, because then you can go, you know, go through what you guys want. So, we can go on who we go on.
Okay, Ms. Willis, and then Ms. Douglas.
I just would like for us, you know, if we don't have a viable solution, I just want us to do something. Because I, I had a resident who, whose Chihuahua was attacked by a puss pit bull the other day. And we have people in our community that have dangerous dogs that roam in our community. And so, I can imagine what it would be like if we don't have any animal control. You know, that's a side of the dead animals that's being left in the streets. That's how it works too, but I do know that I don't wanna see a city without, you know, have some type of animal control placed. So, if we don't have anything to do differently, then, there, she did say we have an opt-out clause.
Sixty days.
Sixty day opt-out clause. So, I would recommend that we move forward. I do not recommend, I hear, Mr. Mayor, that Palmetto has police officers coming out to inspect this stuff, but I, I'm asked, I'm, I would not recommend that we do that, because we are already struggling with response times. And so, I can imagine what the response times would be if they have to come out and inspect a situation concerning an animal. Thanks.
I'm not recommending that.
So, so, I, I definitely hear everything that you're saying. Animal control and its livestock ordinance have just gotten completely under my skin. And, and the reason why is because we do have residents that are on the walking trail, people are letting their dogs move, and they're attacking residents, but they still, you call animal control, and they still do not come. And that's, that's what I'm saying, that do we ever think about maybe that this is a money point? Because many times we're calling, they're, they're saying, based on how many times we're calling, the price goes up. So, to me, the residents are not getting a response, so of course, they're gonna call ten, twelve, fifteen times. So, my thing is, is that we need to find a way to either bring this to a halt, or bring it inside, because this can't keep happening. Her resident, a Chihuahua, a little tiny dog, got loose. Did anybody, will we come? I know a lady on the walk trip. Did anybody come? Horses, bears, goats, everything is out in the middle of the street, and nobody telling me that we gotta wait for them to come? Maybe a day, three days? We just gotta find a best solution. I'm gonna get off this, this sofa.
All right. Did there a motion for? I'll entertain a motion.
I, I make a motion to approve this resolution in IBA with Fulton County to provide animal control services to the city of South Fulton, hopefully on the term of the case.
Okay.
Probably move to second, any discussion? Any none, all those in favor? That's, that's, Melipur, Melipur, go ahead.
Next item is council approval to award, council approval to award a contract for fire hose and nozzles to ten A fire and safety equipment of Georgia LLC, and the amount not exceed a hundred and ten thousand.
How many hours you do for this? Probably move to second, any discussion? Any none, all those in favor? Thank you. Does the room feel all right? Next, Ms. Chris, have a question.
Next item, council approval of resolution and MOU for Fulton County for the receipt and transfer of title of the law and tax.
I move that we approve resolution and MOU for Fulton County for the receipt and transfer title of the law and tax.
Probably move to second, any discussion? Any none, all those in favor? That passed.
Next item, council approval of resolution to revise the impact fee committee.
Ms. Willis, the reason why the committee needs to be revised is to make sure that we have the skill set that we need for the, for the committee, to be active, to be able to bring advice to the county, to the city. So, is there anything else you would like to add, Ms. Reed?
I will say that Amelia and I worked together to ensure that the DBA team met that requirement that you're seeing as an added. So, I just wanted you to know that's what we've worked
So I just wanted you to know that's what we've been working on to finish that. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you. All right, good luck. I make a motion that we, um, improve the resolution for operational efficiency and flexibility for the establishment of the, the, the impact fee committee.
Probably move to second meeting. Discussion, uh, discussion.
So, all, all of, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't know that we were already, no. Okay, I got you. No problem. Yes, do we have more questions, Captain?
All right, we probably move to second. All those in favor? That passes.
Yes.
Next item. Next item is council approval of a resolution for renaming the task force committee.
Yes, and so, um, I, we, there are some things in here that, um, shouldn't be in here, um, Attorney Walker. Number one, we don't want any council members on this committee. Number one, we don't want any council members or any elected officials on this committee. We wanna put this, um, in the total hands of residents. And so, uh, in section B, there was Chairman Mayor Ellis, Councilperson Gomes, and Councilperson Willis. We want that to be, um, taken out. I think that was a copy and paste or something else, because we don't want any council members on this. Um, secondly, we want every council person to appoint two residents that live in their district. Because we wanna make sure we have equal representation, and we wanna make sure we have people who live in the districts on this task force. So that will be two times seven, which is fourteen. And the reason we're not asking the mayor to put in, uh, to anyone on the task force, because he is the mayor, he has veto powers one, and then he is the mayor of all districts. So if he appoints anyone, then it's a chance where it will be unbalanced. So you could have three people from one district, and then we have to deal with the thing about, uh, it not being balanced. So we wanna make sure it's balanced, so we're asking for two people per district. And we are asking them to come up with five names to go on the November twenty-twenty ballot. So do you need me to pull this, or you can rework this?
What, which section?
Huh? I'm sorry, I'm gonna give it over to Pro Tim Mark Baker, because he's co-sponsor of this with me.
I think that, uh, we don't need to hold it, given that we have a deadline on here as far as the symbols. But, uh, I do understand, I mean, we conversed about all of the changes that she's spoken about, um.
Can I get the last change, though?
The last change is that we want two individuals from each district. So that would be two times seven, which is fourteen.
He said, like, something like that.
The twenty-twenty ballot, that's what we want.
Oh, the twenty-twenty ballot.
And, and.
Not, no, this is November, we want it next year.
Twenty, that's twenty-twenty.
Yeah, November twenty-twenty.
Right. But the thing is, they have to be completed. Uh, we may need to just change the completion time of the committee's work, so that we have enough time for them to either campaign, or be amplified, community engagement, or undertake, or whatever name the community may select, those five names, and then we have enough time. I don't know how long it takes, or how much it costs to be on that ballot, but we think that this will be a great opportunity for everybody to be involved. It'll be on the twenty-twenty, uh, ballot in November, which will be the, the time we vote for president. So I think everybody would come out to vote for president, and just see if it ain't possible.
And so, and so, would you recommend that we ask the committee to bring a process back to us? Okay, so we're in, we're in September now. Uh, and so, by the time we get people appointed and everything to this committee, it may not be until October, November. So are you asking that they bring a process back to us by April?
No, sooner than that. They should have a process by December still.
I think that's gonna be too, that's gonna be too aggressive.
We had, uh, we had a marketing firm come with us in almost like a month and a half. But no, no, they, they had a process, at least.
Well, we take about sixteen residents from every district.
Fourteen.
And we, I mean, just think about how all of us, seven people, that were elected, how much they cost to come up with a decision?
I understand, but I think that we do need to have an aggressive timeline.
Let me just say one thing, I think that, one thing, two, two, uh, people. Let me, each one of you are. I think there should be a deadline, um, Baker, as to when next you come on, and then go from there.
Okay, so we need appointees.
By the next.
By the next council meeting. And then I would say let us, let them bring a process back to us, the committee, by January, I think that's fair, top of January, January twenty-twenty. And then we would decide whether or not we accept that process, or how we wanna move forward with the council's ballot, okay?
That's, that's fine, but I think that they should have a timeline for the completion of said process, and it should be around early summer.
Yes, so I was saying that they bring us their idea on how they wanna, what the process is gonna be, January twenty-twenty, and then we can tell them, we, they complete the process, you said, by summer, June, June twenty-twenty? Okay.
All right, several concerns. Um, so the first is, we, we need to rewrite this entire paragraph, because it currently reads, "The task force shall consist of eight members, three of whom might be city council people." That's the first thing we gotta, yeah, yeah. I know that, that, but we just need to, to take that out. Uh, the second thing is that the city council shall appoint two residents who live in their specific districts, and then make two citywide appointments together. So it's just two in their district?
I just said.
Okay, so that brings me to my next question. That's fourteen members, how do we break the tie?
No, that's not what I said. I just said that each council member, can you repeat to him what I just said? Because he doesn't understand what I just said.
I don't.
Can you repeat that? Council, I mean, Attorney Walker, can you repeat to him what I just said?
So my understanding is that we're going to amend this to have fourteen members, no member of council, two members per district. You want the plan by January two thousand twenty, and you want the presentation with recommended names by April, you know.
So that's fourteen members, is that correct?
What, two times seven, fourteen.
That's an even number, so how do you break the tie with fourteen people?
They're not voting on anything.
They're not voting on anything. They're bringing us a process.
They're coming up with five names?
They're gonna get together, let me explain this one more time. They are going to get together, the fourteen people, they're gonna bring us a process on how they're gonna engage the community to come up with five names by January twenty-twenty. What Pro Tim Baker is saying, we need to give them a deadline to have the process completed by June twenty-twenty.
So you're gonna vote on this process?
No, the residents are going to vote on the process.
No, no, I'm asking, how, how does this body of an even number of people make decisions?
That is not on us, that's gonna, that's gonna be on them.
I'm just noting that anytime you have an even number of body, even number of people making decisions.
This is exactly why we're taking ourselves out of it as elected officials. We're putting it on the body of fourteen people to come up with the process and figure this out. That's why we're taking ourselves out of it. We're not telling them how to do it, we're not telling them, we're just telling them, look, by January, come to us with a process. By June twentieth, the process needs to be complete with five names. November twentieth, those five names will go on the ballot.
I, I understand all of that. Again, I am saying most deliberative bodies have an odd number of people, because someone might say, "I like this process," and then someone says, "I like this process," and then people say, "Let's take a vote," and seven choose this, and seven choose that, and then there's none.
Can I make a suggestion that may resolve the issue?
Um, no, because I'm not done yet. Um, the next thing is, they're, they're, they're going to come up with a process to come up with their names. It's my understanding that the only way that an item, and someone who has experience, please let me know, the only way that an item can get on the ballot is if it's on, if it's, uh, voted on in the daily, oh my God, it's terrible. Um, what is it, what is it, what is it? I heard David reported. Not, not, they, they, um, the only way that an item can get on a ballot is either through the state legislature or through a ballot process. We have a, we have our legislative person here. And so, if, if the item is going to get on the ballot, then it has to be on the local legislation, which would have to happen before the, uh, Capitol is out of session in like March or April, or it would have to be by signature, which I think is one percent of the population, so that'd be like a couple of thousand people, like ten or twenty thousand people per each name that we put on the ballot. If there is some other way to get something on the ballot, I would love to hear it, because those are the only two ways that I know that we can put something on the ballot. And so, if we don't have the five names until June, I don't see mathematically how they could end up on our November ballot.
So that is correct. You, either you can have them undergo this process, where they take public input, and then they bring you back names, and then you vote on the names that are brought before you. If you want it to go on the ballot, then it has to be either a citizen-initiated referendum, where you have to have a certain number of signatures, or you can.
I'm sorry.
Well, yes, or you can petition the, uh, state legislature in their next meeting, in their next, um, general.
It won't be a problem for us to petition our state legislature. Uh, half of them date residents should be able to vote on the name. So, we just need to adjust our timeline to accommodate that.
And you can do this, and I'm, so I think that, uh, it may be fascinating to us, uh, to believe as far as the fourteen members go, you know? But I believe that it's possible that our residents aren't complicated as we are.
I hope not, because we went through all of this before, and we had a name, and we vetoed. So I wonder, if we do all of this, are we, are we committing to, if we hate the five names, are we committing to putting the five names on the ballot? If the people vote for the name, and the name is Obama Bill, are we committing to changing the name? I just, I just wanna know.
I mean, at the end of the day, we're putting it in the hands of residents. What residents complain is that they did not get enough input, they did not get enough consensus. Now, this is in the hands of residents, and if they come back with something that is totally unreasonable, we can't live with, it's up to us to move forward or not. But we, they have, they will have five options, and I doubt they will come back with five unreasonable names.
So, so, Madam Attorney, I think one thing that we, we, we got to do over here is, uh, I did hear the fact that we're gonna bring the names back on the next meeting. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, done.
That's, that's my understanding that.
Right.
Okay, that's, I'm sorry, that's my last, that's my last issue. Um, we have, and, and, and I just, I just need to put it out there, we have a arts advisory board that hasn't met. We have an arts council that hasn't met, we know we're about to get an arts center. Uh, we have a finance committee that hasn't met. So now, I'm sorry, we have, they met. So now we, so now I need to come up with two more names for a committee. So I'm just saying, we just, we just make up committees, and we haven't even filled all the committees that we have already made, and they haven't met. Okay, if y'all like it, I love it.
The difference is, this one has, requires a deadline.
Right, right.
Okay. That sounds like you guys may want to amend this schedule to fit the general assembly schedule.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And we need the names by the next meeting, which is September twenty-four.
Okay, we got it.
Thank you. Oh, we gotta vote on this.
Yeah.
Do you have all the changes before we vote, uh, Attorney Walker?
Yes, so I'll repeat those. It's fourteen members, no council members, or two members per district, and for the members to present a plan, no later than December, no later than December two thousand nineteen, and for the schedule to be amended to incorporate approval by the General Assembly during the next legislative session.
See, I stand here, I stand here when we vote on those people.
I just said, September twenty-four.
I can hear that.
At the next meeting.
Yes.
For the council members to bring forth names that are.
One other thing, Mr. Donald, what do you want this committee to assign? I would recommend, I would recommend in communication, but if you think it's bad, if we don't have to say it, then what do you recommend?
I would love to not name it and allow the city manager's office to have discretion on where we assign it.
Okay, so can we, uh, put that in there? Okay. I move that we approve this re, rename the task force resolution.
Second.
I'll be moving second, any further discussion? Fair enough, all those in favor? That passes.
Next item on the agenda is the first reading to amend the alcohol ordinance to men, uh, men titled sixteen alcohol beverages of the city of South Fulton.
Uh, I would like to add Councilmember Gomes and Councilmember Ralph as co-sponsors to this ordinance. Uh, we were diligently with our police department, and I want to thank Captain Tina Johnson, who did thorough research on all cities in the, uh, in, uh, in Fulton County to get us where we needed to be. This, this has taken us about two months, and so I'm gonna turn this over to you guys.
As you all know, we didn't have a perversion in that ordinance that allowed for special events. One of the things that, uh, Captain Johnson researched was the best practices as it relates to that. Those processes have been implemented into this ordinance, and we ask that you all pass it.
I, I would like to add one more thing. Uh, in between now, can you please look into putting a provision in there that deals with special events? Because we can't, as relates to, uh, council-sponsored events, because we can't.
On city property.
Yeah, on city property, because we came into a snag when we had the business showcase. We got around it, but we don't wanna put you all. Oh, she said, she said, yeah.
I, I let her come up and talk about it, she was telling us about it just now.
Okay.
And I'm also incorporating, uh, brew pub, growler, uh, brewery, you know, those standard state provisions. You have those in your existing code, but they're not in here, so I'm just adding those to it.
Uh, yes, we did go ahead and incorporate the ability to accommodate for special events, um, as well as, uh, we included, uh, public, um, entertainment facilities as well as event facility options in there, which should encompass the city council if they wanna sponsor events that pertains to alcohol or having alcohol, as long as the council approves it.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
All right, Madam, I'm sorry, I have a question. We had a, we had an ordinance that was based on Midville, it was a very liberal alcohol ordinance. I'm not sure why that wasn't sufficient. I know that we're gonna have a second read, but I do have some questions. Um, uh, section sixteen dash four thousand one says that, uh, we can't serve alcohol within one hundred yards of a church, two hundred yards of a school, or a public library, or residentially zoned land, which would pretty much eliminate every park in South Fulton, except for Wolf Creek. I think that that's a little problematic, um.
Well, that's actually a state law. Um, what, what we can wind up doing is that if there are some events that take place in a park, uh, we can bring it before the body, and the body has the option then of approving, uh, of the use of alcohol in, in the city parks. And that's where the park ordinance is with it. Without changing that, you could essentially have to change the park ordinance as well.
All right, and so, uh, there's all, wineries are also missing, um, the last one, because we actually have some people who sell wine, farmers' markets are also missing. So those are some things that we have in there. Additionally, there is a, uh, line about following all state laws regarding happy hours, but I don't know what those are, so when we bring this back, I would love to see what those state laws are. Um, and lastly, I don't see a provision in here about city-sponsored events. We haven't defined what a city-sponsored event is. So correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Attorney, but without any definition of a city-sponsored event, as an officer of the city, any event I say is a city-sponsored event is a city-sponsored event. Is that correct? Is there somewhere in the charter or anywhere in our code of ordinances that defines what a city-sponsored event is?
I don't think anybody, or a person.
We haven't done it yet.
I'm just asking.
He's done that, he's been working on it.
But I will, mayor, in my.
So I'm sorry, would you answer that question for me, please?
So you don't have an explicit definition, um, and that's part of the reason why Councilman Gilliard, um, and, and yourself too have, you know, discussed this and said you wanna bring forth that type, that type legislation. But there's gonna be, without having that explicit definition, there is a legal definition that you just don't want to subject yourself to if you don't have anything to provide for it.
Right. What is the legal definition?
Well, I don't want to, I don't wanna.
Got you. So, um, I would ask that we don't bring this back for a second read until we also have an ordinance, uh, describing what city sponsored events are.
They're coming back for a second read, you cannot hold them.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm saying that if there will be a, there will be a hole in this ordinance if we do not at the same time define what a city sponsored event is. So all I'm saying is that I would like to see them come back at the same time.
Well, you would have to make a motion to postpone until that. Without that, we have to bring this back at the next read.
I make a motion to postpone until we have, uh, uh, legislation for what a city sponsored event is.
If there's a lack of. Okay. This is the first read?
Yeah.
Correct.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, uh, Madam Attorney?
Council approval of first reading promoting, uh, ordinance promoting public safety, decreasing public census, amending title six health and sanitation of the city code of ordinances. It's a shopping cart, shopping cart, cart ordinance.
It says, this is the first reading and this is the ordinance promoting public safety. Uh, it's about shopping carts from stores, your Walmarts, your Probers, um, in the parking and, uh, most of the. Kind of while as far as right now trying to clean up the light and what have you in a different areas. So, Councilmember Ralph as well.
Yeah, and I have some of the same issues along Cascade corridor, all fine carts all over the place and grocery stores are not retrieving them. Uh, and so they are of public safety because they can go into the role there all over the place, so. So this is something that we go see the need for in our commercial areas.
We did this in two thousand and six. So my first question would be, and one of the things that came under that two thousand and six revenue account was that Navy foot was in invisible pants. Where that car got so far away from places that one of the words, running field was locked up. And y'all went down the street on three wheels. So, so I'm, so I'm, I'm just saying, so I'm, so I'm, what I'm saying to you is that my question would be, is there one or two people who are gonna be in terms of looking at this enforcement?
Code enforcement.
Is it code?
I'm sorry, so yes, that, that, I'll break the code. It would be code enforcement if we did.
All right.
Uh, add one thing. Um, when this comes back, I also think it should be some kind of, um, making, making sure there's notification to all the grocery stores and the footprint so they understand this ordinance is on the book, uh, because it also speaks to the sixty days of compliance. I think we should do it the same way we did.
Yes, I thank you for saying that. We discussed that in our meeting, also our staff meeting, and that's the communication that our, our assistant city manager directly communicates to begin the communication on that. Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Can I clarify too that, um, I actually did put the primary sponsor on this and that's, uh, Councilmember Donald. And I didn't realize that she was the first person who brought this until I looked at her last week again and I saw that. This is actually.
It's okay because I don't really have a lot of shopping carts in my area, but the issue was that I saw what was happening at Cascade and then also the situation that happened at, uh, Kevry Market Place. So I'm fine with these two young ladies. I need, uh, animal to grow one of them.
You just have to cut the dogs, girl. Okay, uh, Madam Attorney?
The next item on the agenda is council second reading and adoption to amend ordinance title seven municipal courts.
I'll accept the motion. Who's gonna be?
It's a, it's a first read.
No, it's a second read.
It is?
This was the first, the first read was also emergency at the last meeting.
I'll accept the motion.
I make a motion to, uh, approve ordinance for the adoption of amending, uh, title seven municipal courts.
Is there a second?
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, all right. I approve the second. Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, um, in section seven dash one zero zero one, um, I would request that the language in the last paragraph, the chief judge may also privately con- subcontract. I just think it should say subcontract for the pro temp judges privately with the public. So I just don't think. That's confusing.
Did you hear that?
Uh, section seven, seven dash one zero zero two, the judges.
So just.
Their last strike privately may also subcontract for pro temp judges. And I also have a question about that. Just, it seems like there needs to be some language because we've approved the pro temp judges and they've been sworn in by the mayor. So it, it really doesn't speak to that. And it, and it stood out because previously the word had privately, you see the same.
So, so right now it says pro temp judges should be nominated by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the city council.
Okay. Well, we may be okay long as privately is out there.
Right. All right, we got, we got a motion and second. Let's vote. All in favor? That passes.
Next on the agenda is the, see, uh, chief financial officer's report.
The report is at the end of this book, right?
Yeah, we need this report.
While we are waiting for this report, I just wanted to, just remind you, I think I've spoken time and again, time and again, that when you are approving expenses, just make sure that you allocate where those expenditures are coming from. You have just approved the block amount of forty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
But you have, you don't, you have not allocated where it will come from. Application for the.
Go ahead, sir.
So there is no allocation of where those funds will come from. Uh, this is the July twenty nineteen financial status where we are. General fund financial highlights, the city's combined fund is up to, that's for the ten month, from October up to July. So far, we have always to differentiate that we're talking about the cash flow and fund balance. Fund balance is the difference, is the entire fiscal year, but here we're talking month by month. So by end of July, we had the over ten million dollars in cash flow that were over and above the expenditures. This available money can be utilized or can be used to meet the expenses that are there. In that ten million dollars, okay, the available, by end of July, we had revenue of fifty-nine million dollars and expenses were at forty-nine million dollars. You find out that every month we have more revenues than expenses. However, it come to the point where revenues come to an end. Expenses will still be there up to the end of thirtieth of September and some expenses will be up to the beginning of October, that is for the previous, uh, September, previous month. And that's in terms of payroll. You have payroll expenses that will be incurred in September, but they'll be paid in October. Hence, there's important of having some money left in twenty nineteen to pay for the expenses before we start receiving revenues. So general funds revenue, six percent, that is almost remaining for us to meet for our expenses by end of July. However, we still had got about twenty-one percent of expenses to meet our budget expenditures. Revenue highlights, the combined of ten million again in general fund. The city's ongoing commitment, that ten million dollar will be able to meet all the expenses that have been budgeted, below a summary of general fund. And that's the business slices as the, brought more revenue than we anticipated. The local optional sales cards, thirty-three percent of the overall revenues. It's one of the second biggest other taxes, optional sales cards. We have to, the business slices already talk about over twenty-sixty-five million thousand dollars. And this is the summary of our all revenues that we have. And at the end of, with the variances on the right hand side, the variance. So you have twenty nineteen budget, how it was by end of July, and the budget year to date, fiscal year to date, then you have the percentage of the, of the budget. At the end, you have total hundred percent of all the funds. Expenditure highlights, the overall expenditure is a operating at less than twenty-two percent from the budget amount of year to date. Police administration and fire administration both are consumed eighteen percent each of the budget amount. Police and fire department both are operating below budget amount. So even though you have more amounts in the fire and police, you find out that they are way below what was budgeted for several reasons. Some is because of not feeling all the positions that you may have in police. And some, uh, in police, you have also delayed the expenditure of capital, uh, capital projects that they were, they came up to late. So even though you may see that they are spendless, there are reasons why, uh, those expenses are there. Fire, you may see expenditure being raised because their promotions have come towards the end of the fiscal year. So there will still be back payment. Uh, we're supposed to pay about a payroll or payrolls, two payrolls behind. So as we go towards the end of the fiscal year, you find out that those numbers have caught up with the real expenses as it was budgeted. This is the summary of all funds that we have so far. We have general funds in July received about three million dollars. And the, from October to July, fifty-nine million dollars. We have confiscated assets in the July twenty-two thousand dollars. At the end of the whole fiscal year, in fiscal, confiscated fund, we have two-hundred-and-six thousand dollars. Restricted, these are grants, we, grants, we didn't receive anything in July, but for the whole fiscal year is twenty-and-fourteen thousand dollars. Much of this one is coming from separate grant for fire side. Hotel, motel, in July, we still two, two-thousand, thirty and fifty-six for the, in that fiscal year, seventy-six thousand dollars. Chase Plus, we didn't receive for a total of two million dollars. This was the transfer that we got from Hoover County. We are yet to receive the, um, remaining part of Chase Plus for Hoover County. Canto, we didn't receive anything from, in July, as well as for the entire fiscal year. Solid West, July, we still the three-thousand, four-hundred, and for the whole fiscal year, in solid West fund, we still the hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars. So we still three million in July, from October, we still sixty-two million dollars. Expend, expenditure highlights for all funds, overall general fund balance expected then the fat percent of the overall budget amounts. E nine one one fund totaled slightly one-point-nine million dollars year to date. And this money is that come transferred from fund balance, uh, from general fund to E nine one one. We pay one lump sum of money to Hoover County. We don't pay monthly for E nine one one. Only other activities in the month of July represents restricted grants, heavy expenditure, and solid waste. And these are corresponding expenses to the revenue that we had in the two slides before this. This is the summary for revenues as well as the expenses. So on the revenues, we have sixty-nine received, a budget sixty-nine, and we have sixty, fifty-nine million dollars. On expenses, we budgeted for sixty-eight and so far we had received, uh, we had spent for the night. So you see the expenses are less, but those expenses will catch up before the end of the fiscal year. On this page, the most important part of it is the lower part of the, um, fund balance that you can see our deficit where we are with the fund balance. Fund balance will always be there if we are not putting more. I think we have spoken quite enough today and this one should help us as we plan for the upcoming budget, that fund balance would be very important to put aside money for fund balance. Differentiate fund balance and the cash flow. Cash flow is there to meet our monthly bills. Fund balance is as a whole, we are, that's the one we are in, deficit of seven-point-seven million dollars. We plan, if there's any comment or any question. By end of July, we are ready to receive the, uh, August report on the regular fourth of September.
Okay, comments?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
I just. Mr. Pan, is it possible for us to change this whereas Mr. Maladi will give a report like this at the earlier part of the meeting? Cause it, I, I mean, I'm following, I'm looking, but everybody seems to be burned out. We've been here since two o'clock PM and I know a lot of people don't know we didn't even have cameras here early. But, yeah, and we have another one, but I'm just thinking like, a lot of people come here to get information. This might be something that they wanna see. And I think that in the earlier part of the meeting, you know, albeit we have a lot of this information and access to it. I think it are.
We can, we can, whatever, whatever the board.
Mr. Man, I'm, I'm in a queue as well.
Okay, well, just answering his question.
Yeah, I know you prepared it.
I, that's what I'm saying, that, that's what you want, just consistent body, we'll make that change. Yeah, I'll make a change.
Mr. Man, I, I, I agree with, um, fourteen, but I also would like to, our public comments will move to the top. I went to some council meetings and other municipalities and they moved their, they have their, uh, public comment, I mean, their council comments at the top of the meeting because most people are present at the top of the meeting for us to make any type of public com- not public comments, but any type of district updates or you, two-minute district update, most of the people are on and they don't look at these. So I would like, Rob, two-minute district updates to be given at the top of the meeting, after public comments as well.
Whoa, 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 two-minute district, I, I'm with you with the public comment.
No, 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 what I am saying is typically you gave us two minutes to give our district updates. Like whatever we have important updates, you gave us two minutes at, at, at the end of every meeting. Well, we have not been doing that because most of the people have left at the end of the meeting. So what I'm saying is what I observed at another municipality is that that is at the beginning of the meeting when you have most residents here.
Okay, I miss, this way, could you acknowledge the fact that we wanna make one take, make, look at those changes in how we do our agenda?
Yes.
All right. Okay, listen, this, uh, Rob, go ahead.
I'm agree with both of my colleagues. I, you know, listened to the comments that we had early. I could tell there was also a lot of misunderstanding from the public about what our financial situation currently is. And I do think, um, And I do think, um, even based on information that we have been fiscally conservative over the last year, but, um, hearing the comments off the public that we seem to understand that. And so definitely, this information should be moved up to the top. It would have been great in the context of a broader conversation. I understand that we have to make some tough decisions, but we've been watching this thing every month. And, um, we, we just got to do better, um, and make sure we're not confusing the public board with how we present and when we present the information.
Okay, that's fine, we're going to just the agenda coordinate, have no problem with that.
Mr. Mayor, we have one more request. On the eighteenth, there are two of us that, you know, we, we accommodated the election day, um, so we're not going to have our public hearings on the election day of seventeen, so we moved it to the eighteenth. But, uh, some of us had, uh, well, two of us at least had, uh, events planned on that day. And so we're asking if we can, if we can be earlier than six o'clock, um, and possibly we can be there, uh, two or three o'clock for our public.
It's already been advertised?
It can be re-advertised.
We don't have time.
It's public here.
We don't have the time to put it in the paper. It has to be, it's not enough time to put it in the paper.
Okay, but it's, it's September tenth now, the meeting is not until the eighteenth.
That's next week.
Yes, but you said we need seven days.
We need seven, seven business days to get it in the paper for advertising, and we have to advertise.
Can you apply, can we, is there any way we can change the time to earlier, um, attorney walker? And so we're, I'm looking at it, and we have, if it's seven business days, this is today is Tuesday, one, two, three, four, five. Let me see, one, two, three, four, five, yeah, that'd be five. Uh, we have two people who have conflict, um, at six o'clock.
So you're talking about the same date, right?
Yeah, the same day, we're just asking to move the time.
You're talking about the time.
Not the date, the time.
Oh, you already advertised the time.
Yeah.
That's not the final vote anyway, is it?
So I'd have to look at the stat too, I don't, it might just be seven days, but I, I think regardless, I think the problem they're going to run into is getting the advertiser to agree. Because they even have to run it tomorrow, right? And I don't think that would be, I think they'll be near impossible, they can try, and just be told, no, you know, they said we can't, I think it would be extremely difficult.
Remember, we had to re-advertise for the other one because we were not, we didn't make seven days. We had to spend that money because it was not seven days. So this one is seven days, and there are two, is public hearing as well as adoption of the budget.
So there are two meetings on the day?
Public hearing will follow the adoption of the, will do the same, there will be public hearing as I did presented, then there will be reading of the ordinance. After that, comments, there's no comments, you end up in adopting the budget.
So, so we, so is it in a way possible we can move the time up, that's all we're asking. Um, the attorney is looking to see.
You can move the time, maybe it is time moving after six o'clock, but you can't move before six o'clock.
No, we're asking to move it up because that's the problem, it's at six o'clock. So we're waiting, asking her to look to apply.
So is it at least one week before the budget hearing itself, that you have to give the required notice? So that one week would be, the ad would have to run tomorrow? I think that would be extremely difficult to get legal organs to agree to run the ad on that day. When I say you can't try, I'm just saying I wouldn't count on them to be able to do that that quickly.
Is that what? Okay, well, we'll call in. We need the clerk's office to make revisions for two people to call in. If you all can't, if it's impossible for you all to do that.
Well, we just, they, well, we know that with the day's work, we can't, it's not going to be able to happen, not for it to be advertised tomorrow.
We understand we need you all to make provisions for two people to call in.
Yes.
Okay. And the clerk was there.
City manager's report?
That needs to be up top too, get set.
So you received the, uh, written report, but I think today's report would be a fairly timely one because of the, uh, the comments and the presentation you just had from the CFO. As well as, uh, I noticed some of the comments from, uh, our partner, the, uh, the assistant, uh, the small-town Stockbridge. Uh, her comments related to, uh, our overall performance and budget allocation. Um, I think it just kind of, this presentation highlights last year, or this year, I'm sorry, you adopted a ninety-eight million-dollar budget, um, which is, you know, a fairly large budget, but not for a city of our size and needs and revenues. I think the CFO highlighted that you currently have the ten-point-one million in net cash flow, uh, as well as, uh, you had a sixty million dollars in revenues connected so far, but you've only, uh, expended about fifty, uh, million dollars. As well as having a twenty-two percent, uh, cost savings and budgeted expenditures, which would say you've been, uh, good managers of the overall budget allocated to the city. Which was definitely something that was not, uh, relayed earlier. Would have loved to be able to highlight those comments, uh, earlier in the meeting. But when we look at the FY nineteen budget, uh, there were a variety of performance activities, uh, included in there, key outcomes that were supposed to come out of the budget. And so this is just a highlight, that not only have the city of South Fulton been great stewards of the ninety-eight million dollars that was budgeted, but we have met all of those goals that we put forth in that budget. So in short, our citizens are getting what they paid for. And so just to highlight, uh, that, this is the organizational chart, uh, as it is currently, uh, right now. So it's just including that to highlight that their performance goal in every area here. I'm, uh, if somebody could go to the next slide. Um, so when you look at just these overall, uh, performance goals, and I, I will not dive super deep into them, I know it's late in the evening, and we may want to repeat this report at some time in the future to make sure that folks understand the type of results they're getting, uh, from the city of South Fulton and their taxable investment. But, uh, you know, we have developed and implemented a recruitment retention plan for police and firefighters, uh, which is connected to your pay and pass plan that you pass. We've also improved and enhanced customer service by implementing everything from the twenty-four-seven call center. The, uh, mayor's, uh, community walk, uh, also, uh, increasing responsiveness in regard to permanent implementation, as well as code enforcement, decreasing complaints and things of that nature. Uh, you've also revamped your open record system, uh, in which you were under fifty-five percent prior to my arrival, now you're closer to ninety-eight percent, which is a drastic improvement in one year. Uh, if you look at the overall, uh, also, uh, we talked about, uh, the committee structures, and so as you can see, you've started to implement those through your own legislation that are currently, and they're currently being staffed. Uh, one great example is the finance committee, which I think you talked, talked about today. Uh, we've also implemented this new organizational structure, um, that we discussed in FY nineteen, uh, plan, and we're also, uh, of course, evaluating for FY twenty-twenty. Uh, you've implemented a CRM system for your three-one-one, and, uh, by the, uh, end of this fiscal year, beginning of the next, you'll have a dedicated three-one-one telephone number. Your police department, uh, has increased, uh, oh, well, we'll just talk about the capital project. All of the capital projects that have been associated with, um, the various departments have at least, um, begun implementation, with the exception of those that were moved into, uh, the, uh, URA or other sources and moved to FY twenty-twenty. Uh, many of those have had some quality results to date, uh, and so we can move on to just a quick department overview. And so when you look at just police and their highlights, uh, we have added fifty-six officers, increasing the force by forty-nine percent. Uh, as you see, we've also done that under budget by twenty-two percent over those projections. In addition to that, while we had a dismal nineteen-minute response rate, uh, for those priority one calls, it's decreased to ten minutes. While it's not necessarily what we want, if we are fair, that is, um, right at the average of other police departments within the region. Uh, it actually, um, uh, is ahead of the old Stockbridge. Um, in addition to that, we've implemented a variety of community programs. We've also redesigned the police deep structure partnering with Georgia Tech. Uh, in addition to that, we powered officer body cameras to rave reviews, uh, as well as upgrading a new report management system and providing statistical information for public use. And by district, which was not available before, while implementing e-ticket equipment and providing, um, that statistical data reference earlier. Uh, the same is, uh, clear for fire and rescue, where they've increased hiring, reduced the response times by more than thirty seconds, and established automatic aid agreements with South Fulton, uh, fire departments, and installed two-hundred-and-fifty smoke detectors. Uh, in addition to that, while we have not yet lowered the ISO, we made the great steps in FY nineteen, uh, exceeding equipment, uh, efforts while not adding additional costs to the city, uh, which is a great step for us and puts us in position, uh, in FY twenty to see real progress. Next, when you look at public work, which is traditionally the most expensive, uh, operation in a city behind, uh, police, we reduced that cost by about one-and-a-half million dollars. Uh, so the eleven million dollars, um, quoted today was actually quite false. Our cost is about six million dollars, and the projected cost was nine million. So in turn, you had a three-million-dollar cost savings in your FY nineteen budget, but you also implemented a winter and snow emergency plan, uh, the summer-winter road and maintenance schedule that was much less than Fulton County by two weeks, which we're proposing to reduce by another two weeks in FY twenty. Uh, we've implemented traffic calming plans that have actually exceeded contracts, I think we contracted twenty-five, we did over fifty, um, up to two months ago, and we'll have a final count at the end of the year that'll be just under a hundred. Uh, in addition to that, we've assumed all of the contracts for our T-Slotz projects and implemented seventy miles of road paving, which is actually more than what the county did under their watch, and we had it for a short period of time. Uh, we've also implemented the adopt-a-road program, thank the council for passing that legislation, staff is currently implementing it, so we've, uh, also achieved that goal. We facilitated lease agreements for, uh, the public safety building, which we'll be executing tomorrow, uh, as well as a remodel of Station One that Councilmember Gill Yard highlighted earlier today as ahead of schedule. We've also facilitated the development of the Buckner Road precinct, which is now funded and construction is underway, as well as developing a streetlight policy, which we provided, um, to the council and assumed, successfully assumed operations of Merton Miles Transfer Station without any interruption in service. Uh, also on the public work, we've started the transportation study, uh, for which we're the biggest contributor. We've also completed those resurfacing projects I mentioned earlier, uh, and implemented a amnesty day immediately after taking over control of the Merton Miles. Uh, we have also hired additional personnel for facilities and fleet, which was not in place prior or post-transition, uh, as well as receiving LAPS certification, which means we can go after our own federal projects, which we could not before. Uh, in addition to that, uh, I think the remaining area, which is very important, is for us to implement, uh, an infrastructure management, um, program, uh, so that we can ensure that we understand where our infrastructure is and how we plan to maintain it. Parks and Recreation is more of the same, where we are in the process of developing one of the, uh, nation's best park master plans, enhancing and diversifying, uh, additional programming such as STEM programming, which I think you guys were really impressed with, uh, when we awarded it over a month ago. Uh, and we've begun to maintain and upgrade facilities and infrastructure as ever since by the eleven-million-dollar capital budget. Uh, and so as we move to community development and regulatory affairs, another example of us exceeding those FY nineteen, uh, goals, where we revamped the enforcement and nuisance abatement, uh, services program. Again, thanks to council for the ordinance that allowed that, and allows us to allocate fifty percent of our revenues generated, um, from this process, as well as starting the process to bring animal control in the house, which I know Councilmember Gump will be excited about. Uh, we've updated the twenty-thirty-five comprehensive plan by adopting Fulton County, and now starting the process to change the zoning ordinance and drafting and adopting it to make sure that it's consistent with the city, uh, and of course, creating that nuisance abatement, uh, nuisance, uh, abatement ordinance. With destination of South Fulton, there are many goals, and we've also met or exceeded all of those, um, by creating that one-stop shop for permitting processes. And while there are many opinions, um, about it, and the council is free to do as they choose, I'd also like you to look at the results. Uh, because we have reduced the permitting process, uh, down, uh, to less than nineteen days, when it was well over ninety, uh, before, and I think we put the safeguards in place to ensure that there's no underhanded dealings. There have been no accusations of such, and the results have been stellar. Uh, in addition to that, when we look at the code enforcement education program, there's no other like it in the region, so again, we continue to lead the region in our activities. And I would also challenge those who have questions about those operations, you know, what their cities are doing. Um, we look about, um, at the other activities that we have, we've looked at strategic locations for mixed-use development, working with our council, and I think we've also had some quality results there, as well as developing business incentives as we go, highlighted by the one-hundred percent freeport tax exemption that has resulted in the first, um, annexation into the city of South Fulton, noting that there have been no Fulton industrial annexations into our competitors at the city of Atlanta. Further, when we look at our municipal courts, uh, which you can go to next, um, they have also, uh, not missed a beat regardless of changes in leadership. Uh, we've secured permanent or semi-permanent space so people know, um, where a court is, and we've been able to also do that under budget. We've, uh, hired additional staff so that in the absence of the chief judge, we have pro temp judges, and we resolve cases within the thirty to sixty days, um, of citation issuance. Moving to communications and external affairs, we've implemented the communication notification process as promised in the FY nineteen budget. We've enhanced our internal and external communications, I think you remember, uh, we didn't even have a newsletter or any social media activity. Now we're over ten thousand in all of those categories for engagement. Uh, further, we've increased the local and regional and national awareness of the benefits of living in the city of South Fulton with, um, our Where You Want to Be campaign, as well as stellar results, uh, on the actual, uh, referendums in the last, uh, in the last, uh, fiscal year. Uh, in addition to that, um, there are, because of the change in structure, I just wanted to highlight that we have not developed a two-year budgeting process because those responsibilities would transition over to the city treasurer's office, as well as, um, developing a, uh, uh, the performance and financial management system. Um, those responsibilities move, uh, to the treasurer's office. And so I would just like to close with saying that every area that we, as a city, uniformly have committed to in the FY nineteen budget, we have met or exceeded ahead of schedule. Um, and so while many of these goals were kind of tied to transition, there are plenty areas, um, of. Um and so while many of these goals were kind of tied to transition, there are plenty areas um of innovation, and we're well on our way to world-class service. So um I think it's important to highlight the excellent results of FY nineteen and to double down in FY twenty. That concludes my report.
I have one question. See, um I, so I read the city manager report, and it gave a number of the uh, the applications that were filed but are holding to moratorium.
Mm-hmm.
How can I get a copy of everything that was filed? Do I need to send you and this?
I think you can. Yeah, I think you can. If you would just, any requests that you have, just forward them to us, and uh we'll respond accordingly.
Okay, and I just also want to give an update because um, uh it was reported that code enforcement belongs under um planning. And um I had done research and sent it to the council and you and this, and code enforcement is under police in several municipalities. So that is not etched in stone. So I would challenge the assistant city manager, Stockbridge, who reported that, to also call those municipalities who have code enforcement under police and find out why they be, they deem it necessary to put code enforcement under police.
Well, I think small cities like Stockbridge, with twenty-four thousand people, have different setups than those of larger cities of a hundred thousand people like the city of South Fulton. So I think we consider it all, and you know, people can make comments or not.
But I just want to make sure because it was reported that that's where it's supposed to go, and that's, and that it's not etched in stone. I gave you all research where in Fulton County, there are about four cities who have code enforcement under police. And this is something that residents have requested of our city to do. And so um what I will encourage, since this is being recorded, residents, if you would like to see code enforcement remaining on the police, then you all need to talk to your council members um and express them how you feel.
All right. Matt, sir?
That is the um council meeting agenda for September tenth.
I'd like to make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Pop, move to second. Y'all want to go to our bigger second? Okay.
Yeah.
Mrs. Dow, that was a very good report.
Thank you very much.